Hello, can anyone hear me?
Yes, this is Josh.
Yes, this is.
This is Matt with the City of Neckadoches, we can hear you just fine.
Okay, perfect. Can you also then see my screen?
Yes, sir, we can. It says you're presenting to everyone. Okay, yes, we see you have office and then, okay, PDFs there. We will, you will in just a second.
Okay, we'll begin with a prayer, Mr. Bolden.
Mayor, let's stop for a moment. Father, I know that you know what the future holds and that nothing comes as a surprise to you. But what the future holds bring me so much unknown. You are aware of the decisions that need to be made. I pray that you would give us guidance at this time. Where things seems unclear, would you bring clarity? And where we are filled with anxiety, help us steady our thoughts. Help us to trust you through this process. Father, let us rest in the knowledge that we can cling to you no matter the outcome. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
I'll call this meeting to order. If you'll rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That will take us to number three, our work session, discuss and consider development of redistricting plans for the city council wards. The city planner.
All right, Alana Hilton, city planner, thank you, mayor. Tonight's work session is the second step in the redistricting process. Just to recap, Bickerstaff, the consultant, provided a presentation to the city council on November 2nd, which was the initial assessment in evaluation of our demographics and our population shifts based on the 2020 census data. And based on that, made recommendations for redrawing or revising the redistricting lines or the district lines in order to comply with federal regulations. And so, this evening, Philip Arnold with Bickerstaff is back with us in person and he's going to be going through that exercise with you of redrawing those lines. And we'll also have an opportunity for public comment. There will also be a second meeting where we'll have an opportunity to draw lines as well and have public comment and that'll be on December 6th. So if we don't finish tonight, we'll have a second opportunity to wrap that process up or just provide more general feedback. So with that, I'll open it up to Mr. Arnold.
Thank you, council members, mayor, for having me. If we could start off, I'd like to just start off and just kind of where we left off last time. And with what's on your screen right now is the initial assessment, is what we call it. So this is the current council districts with the new 2020 population data put into them. So this just kind of frames our problem where we are. The overall deviation number you see on the bottom left is thirteen point one one percent. That needs to be under ten percent in order for us to be compliant with one person, one vote. And again, you can see the size of the districts there. The deviation number, the fourth column from the left, is the number we need or the percentage numbers that add up to that thirteen point one one. And so you can see District 2 is the smallest district, District 1's the biggest, District 3's somewhere in between, and District 4 is oddly almost perfectly balanced. So what I'd like to do is start with this and then move from here into, if, and Josh Bristol's on the computer, he's navigating all this for us. He's in our office in Austin, he's our GIS tech, one of our GIS techs. And we'll manipulate all the maps for us, but he's got some PDFs I want to look at first. So Josh, if you could put up the current council districts, just so we have an idea of what they look like right now. So these are the current council districts. And I know they're by north, southeast, west wards. And we numbered them just because in our chart, they have numbers. So we can ignore the numbers if you want. But just when you look at the chart, that's kind of why we have them numbered. So this is where we are right now. And then we did two plans. So one of which we have, we call Plan A, I put it into a PDF, we can look at those real quick. The first plan is really the simplest way to put the districts in balance. It requires the least amount of change possible in order to do it. The other plan, we drew this afternoon after kind of a lot of discussion and back and forth about how to do it, was to take the southeast ward and take it out of, you know, how it stretches across the city really, and just make it more compact. Because I know that was something y'all talked about, the initial assessment, about looking at. And so that's what we did there. Now, that required not huge dramatic changes, it didn't switch everything around, but it is a very different map. So I just want to frame it that way. There's kind of an easy solution, maybe a more complicated solution. We can look at both and move the lines around on either one. Or we can throw them all out and start with what we have here, which is the existing map, and move lines around wherever y'all want to from there. So Josh, if we could go to the Plan A, we'll start with the Plan A map, and then move to the chart after that.
Sure.
So this is the Plan A map we drew. The red lines are the existing council districts. The shading is the change. So the big change in this map is District 2 coming up into District 4 on the west side and capturing some of that population essentially. And then District 2, because it was the smallest district, also needed to come into District 1. And Josh, if you could kind of zoom in on the center of town and look and see, and we could look at this and we'll look at it in our mapping software, which is called Edge. It'll be clearer, but just to give you an idea. So District 2 came into the center of town to capture some population there because the population in Neckadoches is centered largely in the middle of town. So it doesn't do us a lot of good to try to capture your population around the edges. There's just not a lot there to work with. So this still allows the southeast ward to connect in its kind of two sections through the middle of town. And then District 2, also on the south side, if you could scroll south a little, Josh, captured some population from the southeast ward there at the bottom and the south side of town. So this is a broad overview kind of of the Plan A we looked at. This is kind of the simple way of putting the city in balance. Josh, could we put up the summary chart for Plan A? So this will show you, the overall deviation, again, at the bottom left, under Plan A is nine point two six percent. And that's under our ten percent goal. And then you can see how the population changes and the demographics change as we move across the chart from left to right. So under Plan A, the smallest district would be District 2. The largest district is District 3. And again, yeah, the numbers are a little off. Or the numbering versus what you refer to them as, the ward names. So this is an option. We also drew one. Josh, if you could pull up the Plan B we drew today in Edge. So he'll load this plan in for us. So we have all these planes digitally, so we can zoom in on them and make changes to them within these maps if you want. This is what we're calling Plan B. And this made more significant changes. So this really, the focus of this plan was to try to consolidate the southeast ward more compactly. It still had to go through the middle of town, again, to capture population just because there wasn't enough population, really, without just completely cannibalizing the northeast ward. So we brought one up into the northeast ward and essentially divided what was kind of that western part of the southeast ward between District 2 and 3. And again, you can see the red lines are the existing district lines and the shading is the proposed changes. So you can see, we took kind of that, the finger of District 1 that went to the west and divided it between 2 and 4, which just kind of makes sense. And then had to expand District 1 to the north, but also keep it in town in a way that allowed it to maintain the population balance. And you can see this plan, on the top right of Josh's screen, there's a blue box that says five point seven four percent. That is the deviation under this plan. And Josh, could you close that layer box and let us see the demographics at the bottom? It's little, I don't know if y'all can read it on your screen? Make it a little bigger. So you can see the demographics there. District 1 is still predominantly African American compared to the other districts, but is definitely less than before. So are, could you zoom out a little, Josh? Sorry, I was a little, oh, that was you, okay, sorry, never mind, Josh, leave, stop, do what you're doing. Okay. So this made the District 1, the southeast ward, I need to pick a particular word for this, otherwise I'm going back and forth. That the population of the west side of the southeast ward was almost, not completely, but it was largely African American and Hispanic. Kind of divided in the middle, the Hispanic in the middle between an African American population on both sides. So it really kind of put that population between District 2 and 4, but still left a largely African American district in the southeast. And then the rest of the demographics you can see at the bottom. The population is really pretty even, evenly distributed between the different wards. And there are, there are little changes to this that we played with. And you can see, so for example, the border between 2 and 4, we followed a creek. And now I've forgotten the name of the creek, I specifically looked it up. It's called Pond, Mill Pond, Mill Pond Creek. So that's the line we followed to divide those two. Now, you can move it up, there is an FM road there. That divides them, that we could use as our dividing line. That would still work, it would still put the city in balance. So there's changes like that we can make. That essentially moves, there's that Hispanic population between that FM road and the creek that's really concentrated in that area that may be more appropriate for them to be in District 2 or 4, kind of depending on the neighborhoods, the kind of details of neighborhoods that you all know more about than we do. So there's changes like that that may make sense. And then there's some minor changes. Josh, if we could zoom out and kind of go to the south. There is the kind of finger in the south, I believe it's a wastewater treatment plant or a landfill. There's really no population there. So right now, it's in 1, it was in 1 before, it's connected by a tiny little road. If you want to put that in District 2 or the southwest ward, it doesn't really matter. There's about five people in that whole land mass that would go from one to the other. So there's little changes like that that we can do too, that may make sense. Generally, I like to kind of leave things the way they are just because particularly with something like that, that's not going to shift any population. You know, but there may be a reason to move something like that, that you all know. Otherwise, our borders, we try to follow, we follow the creek. And then, Josh, with this one, if you could zoom into the middle of town. So we have little red dots roughly where you all live, so that our goal there was to try to keep you all in your districts, right? So that's why 4 comes in like it does, why 3 comes in like it does, and why 1 snakes around it a little bit. So because everybody kind of lives around each other, it was a little difficult to make it as square as you may want it to be. But everybody, meaning in town, works really well because the concentration of population is in town. So it's easy to take little pieces and move them around. So if there's any little pieces, kind of in the middle, that y'all want to move around, those are, that's really easy to do and we can do. And we try to follow, let's see, I think if we zoom in there, we had University as one border, is that right, Josh?
Yes.
So we tried to follow what we thought were big, major streets that were obvious dividing lines. Main Street, University, a creek or an actual barrier, things like that. So if there's any details of these plans you want to see, what we can have Josh do is kind of take us around the borders and see what changed. Because this is a pretty dramatic change. So this is not, you know, what you have right now. Or we can go back and look at Plan A and look at that one. Or we can scrap both these plans and start with what we have now and make changes to that.
Any comments? Maybe you, you two that have had the biggest, maybe the biggest change, any thoughts for one?
Well, now, Zone, I'm going to go 1, 2, 3, 4. Zone 1 and 2 are basically only changes need to be made, right? 1 need to go down and 2 need to come up.
Yes, sir, I believe that's right. Josh, could you put up the initial assessment, summary total population chart? So he can put this on top. So yes, District 2 was too small and District 1 was the biggest. 3, 3 and 4 probably could have, you know, we didn't necessarily have to move those populations around just because they were kind of in between. But as long as 1 and 2 switch populations, that's all that really has to happen.
And you mentioned about the buck population, it's downtown.
The what?
Buck population.
The book?
Buck.
Oh, bulk, yes, sir, yes.
But that's not counting 1, District 1 though, right? That's not adding into District 1.
The...
The bulk of the population.
I think you said, was it more dense?
Yes, sir. It's just, yeah, well, not necessarily in downtown, but just in the center of the city as opposed to the outer bands of the city. So when we were looking to move population, so under the initial assessment, you can see, sorry, Josh, could you put that chart back up again? We need to move around, you know...
250, 260, 700?
Yeah, I mean, about 800 people.
Yeah, total, between the...
Yeah, yeah. And to do that, we really had to, you would either have to move larger chunks of territory on the outside of town or come inside of town and just, it's easier to move the population around when it's denser.
But the dense population downtown is basically white, correct?
Is basically what, I'm sorry?
White.
Yes, so the African American population in town is largely in the southeast and kind of where the southeast district went into the west. And again, kind of with a large Hispanic population mixed in there as well. And so that's kind of the, I'm guessing that's probably why it was drawn the way it was, was to probably keep those neighborhoods together in some way.
Yeah, right, but when you spoke of downtown, I was looking more like in the area, you're probably not familiar, but with part of the northwest and northeast, which would be 3 and 4 in the district. It would be dense.
It would be dense?
Yes.
Okay. So the reason we didn't come up through the middle of town was to try to keep...
The borders and next to each, I mean, the one...
Well, really, essentially people in their districts. So as you can see where the council members for 3 and 4 live, that it's hard to draw around them. If we went around through 3, we would cut 3 off. If we weren't around through 4, we'd cut 4 off.
So like 1, it has to connect, no matter what part of town it's in, it has to connect, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir, has to touch each other.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can be no separation.
Correct, has to be contiguous, that's the Supreme Court fancy word for it.
Okay. Well, so far, I like Plan A better than the Plan B so far.
Okay.
Mr. Anderson, anything?
Not yet. Still looking at things.
Ms. Fisher?
Sure. A quick question on the Plan A, if you could pull that one up for me where you break it up between 2 and 4. That, that here.
Yep, Josh, it may be easier to pull it up and, do you want to zoom in on it? We could pull it up in Edge and maybe...
No, it's a more big picture idea.
All right.
Or question, having to do with the racial makeup. And so, okay. So the red lines are the existing, right? And the shading is the proposed plan.
Correct.
So my question is, under Plan A, does that, does giving that block, you know, in this, I guess, south, what, southwest, yeah, corner of the northwest ward, does giving that to the southwest ward affect the...
The demographics of it?
In the sense of diminishing the voting power of the Hispanic population in that area, is my question. Because it seems like, I'm concerned about breaking up an area in a way that will diminish the voting power of that community, if that makes sense.
That makes perfect sense.
Okay.
Josh, could we put up the initial assessment, summary population chart, and also the Plan A summary population chart, so we can see the difference? Okay, is there a way to put them kind of on top of each other, Josh, so we could get a little better view? No, I think it's just my screen.
Ours is too, a little bit.
Okay, so the top one is the current demographic breakdown. And then the bottom one is Plan A. Josh, could you make Plan A, stretch it out maybe a little left, right? Make it a little bigger? Okay. So currently District 2 has a population, Hispanic population of thirty eight point three six percent. And that will go to thirty seven point eight nine percent under Plan A.
Okay.
So there is a change, it's fairly minor.
That's what I was asking, because I mean, the percentages in term, without having experienced the way that you do, it isn't clear whether that percentage drop is significant or not.
It's not really, I mean, from a legal perspective, you look at one voting age population, and we can look at that for complying with the Voting Rights Act. We can look at those charts if you want. And you, if you have a district that is over fifty percent of any particular minority group, then that can be considered a majority minority district. And, but, that doesn't necessarily mean that it will or will not elect someone, you know, a candidate of that community's choosing, for example. An African American district tends to not need as much voting age population to elect an African American candidate. And Hispanic district tends to need more Hispanic population to elect a Hispanic candidate. That has a lot to do with voter registration, citizenship, voter turnout, things like that. But it's also a reflection of concentration of African Americans and typically because of segregation, tend to have an African American neighborhood within a city. Whereas Hispanics don't always, because they have largely migrated to Texas after segregation was ended. So they may live in a particular side of town, they may not. They tend to be a little bit more diffused throughout the town.
Okay.
So it's difficult to say if, you know, for example, if the total population of a city is fifty percent Hispanic, should they have fifty percent of the council districts, for example? Well, that may not be possible, just because they don't live in a concentrated area.
Right.
And also may not be possible because of citizenship rates and voter registration rates.
Okay, that makes sense. But at least looking at the data, I mean, the way that it is now, it doesn't, it's not a concerning thing for you, is my question.
No, it's not concerning for me unless it's concerning for you all. But no, not from a demographic, not from a legal perspective.
Okay, yeah.
Because you can have, I mean, we can see the, let's see. So the African American population of District 1, of the southeast district, actually increased a little bit under Plan A. But there are a lot of what you might call performing African American districts who have African American populations of thirty percent or thirty five percent. And so a fifty percent African American district isn't necessarily required in order to elect an African American candidate.
Right.
So a population shift of a percentage or two, when you're in the high forties, may not matter. I mean, it's difficult to say, but it probably wouldn't. But it may for some other group.
Okay, that's helpful.
But those are, again, broad generalizations that don't always hold true in every city and everywhere.
Okay. So then, my broad idea with a question at the end is, I understand the draw or the attractiveness, I guess, of picking Plan A for the reason of changing as little as possible about it. And that seems to go in line... And, and that seems to go in line with a lot of the criteria, um, and doing that based on the existing map. But if the existing maps in and of themselves are problematic, right? Then it seems like the more important thing to do in terms of fairness would be to make the bigger change, even though it would be a bigger pain. Um, and so my question to you is taking away, I mean, because for, for people who don't have a ton of experience in, in redistricting, when you look at this map, to me at least, it looks a little, it looks weird. And with your explanation and, and, and needing the Southeast Ward to cut through and be contiguous, um, that, that makes plenty of sense, but just looking at it without any knowledge and background, it looks strange. So, um, taking that, well, it doesn't matter if you take that out of the equation. I guess my question is, um, was there anything in your analysis of our map as it exists today that makes you, besides the, the population deviation, right, that makes you think, uh, this looks bad and this was probably done for X reason and, and, and we should probably be more in favor of Plan B?
I don't think so. Uh, in two thousand and ten, uh, this map had to be approved by the Department of Justice, so it's already got at least tacit legal approval. Uh, I don't think any change we make under Plan A would run afoul of that. It's not, it's, doesn't look any weirder under Plan A than it does now.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so part of kind of the initial sniff test under a Voting Rights Act case is, do the districts look weird, right? And, and, uh, I don't know if you remember the initial assessment, I have a little picture up there of kind of a crazy-looking district, right? Uh, and there is a, um, Shaw versus Reno, uh, case in North Carolina where, um, the legislature drew a, to, first they drew an African-American district in the whole state of North Carolina, one, one congressional African-American district. And then the Department of Justice said, well, you need to draw two, because there's population for it. So they drew a second one, and it essentially followed a highway. Uh, and it was a long snake-looking thing with, you know, a bunch of kind of fingers coming off it that really just cut across the center of the state. Uh, the Supreme Court said, you cannot do that. Like, even if you're doing this for maybe, uh, the right goal, uh, to maximize African-American votes, um, that does not look right, and that is suspicious, right? And then they go into a deeper analysis of why did you actually do this? And that's where we really get into the criteria.
Mm-hmm.
So the criteria that you all passed, that we recommended, and that really come from the Supreme Court, are designed to not make race the ultimate factor in it. So, uh, as we do this, you know, race can be a factor, you just don't want it to be the factor, right? Because that's when you end up with a crazy shape. Uh, the fact that, you know, the Southeast District is, I don't know the right way to describe it, kind of barbell-shaped, I mean, it kind of has two, two different sides to it, right? Uh, I mean, that, that was pre-cleared by the Department of Justice, right? Uh, in two thousand and ten, uh, it, it, uh, solidifies an African-American district in town. Uh, keeps communities of interest together, probably. Uh, and, um, you know, I, I, I think there's reasons for it. Um, you know, is it something that if you don't change it, nobody will sue you? I, you know, who knows? Uh, but I think it's more def- I think it's defensible, uh, in court probably, uh, to, to look at that and say, well, you know, it's been like this, um, should it always be like that? Uh, that's really a policy question, uh, for you all, and we can go through the options and see, you know, what the options are. We have two, uh, but we can, there's certainly many more we can look at.
Okay. Yeah, m- my, I think that my concern, I, I lean more on the policy reasoning versus whether it's, whether we're going to get sued and can get beat, right? I mean, like, I just want to make sure that we're doing the right and fair thing. Um, but your answer was really helpful.
Yeah.
Good, Mary, thank you.
Ms. Bowinger?
I don't really have anything to say about this, so. I'm, I'm okay with either plan. Um, I don't think our ward is affected as much. I'm in the, um, Northeast Ward. And I know Plan B does take some out of there. And some of those are my favorite people, but if it's the right thing to do, I'm okay.
Yeah. Well, and there's not a lot of population necessarily in that area, is my recollection. And we can look at, you know, I mean, there's changes you can do that may be more palatable to you all, because you know, uh, where people live, where their neighborhoods are, um, things like that, that, you know, I can look at this from a math perspective and say, here's a group of people, and I want to put them from this district to this district, because it equal, equals things out. Uh, but that may not be the right thing to do. There may be people who live in that, there may be a neighborhood there. Um, and I can look at, you know, the creek and see, well, that's a natural dividing line. And I, you know, looked at it on Google Earth and different stuff to see, well, are they connected more to, uh, to, to the, to the north or the south part, right? Uh, because they could kind of go in either ward. Uh, so it seemed to me that they were kind of connected to the north, maybe, by a road, more than they were to the south, because the creek divided them, but that may not necessarily be true. Um, so if there's things like that you all want to look at, um, and that you all know, um, then, you know, we can do that and make these changes. They're, uh, fairly simple to change. Um, we can really, we just select the boxes and put it from one district or one ward to another.
I, I was going to clarify, that one section takes, um, a whole housing district where people who are differently abled live.
Okay.
And that's currently in the Northeast Ward. Um, and I think it would go, it looks to me like it would go to the Southeast Ward, but.
It would, and we can look at, you know.
I'm sure Mr. Bolden would take care of them.
I did have another comment. I'll pass.
Anything else, Ms. Bowinger?
Thank you.
Ms. Bowinger, do you have something?
No.
No, of, of the two plans, I would lean toward Plan A personally. Um, I think that, uh, you know, without looking at it right now, but, um, it seems that, that there's, there's a particular neighborhood off of Old Tyler Road, which is, I, I can't even re- I don't remember the F M number there.
Okay, Josh, could you throw up Plan A real quick? Sorry, he can do this while we're talking, but I, I think it'd be easier if everybody kind of, it seems like we're talking about Plan A a lot. It'd be good to look at it, and we could kind of see.
Yeah.
Details of it, that we can't see in those PDFs?
But there's a particular neighborhood, there, there's, that's, that sort of, uh, explains the reasoning, I think, for the, the current map. Um, that is, that is heavily Af- African-American there that I, that, in my opinion anyway, should, should probably remain in the Southeast Ward. Um, and that's, you know, as you described it, it's a barbell shape. Um, there, there are good reasons for that, um, and so that I would tend toward, toward Plan A myself.
Yeah.
For that reason, to, to, uh, to keep that voting block intact.
So Josh, if we could scroll a little south and look at maybe the change, uh, along one and two. So this was one of the changes. Now, part of this, almost half of that territory is really a park, so there's not much population there. And you can see, um, Josh, if you could zoom in, it's a little, a little hard to read on my screen, but there, there, the numbers there, the, the top number's total population. And then, Josh, I believe the next number is African-American, is that right, in red?
Correct, and, and lastly Hispanic.
Okay, and Hispanic in green. So, um, that's an idea of just kind of, one, where people live. Uh, but two, the demographics of it, and trying to keep the demographics, uh, together and equal as much as possible. Um, so Josh, if you could scroll up a little bit. Um, so that, that's kind of the major change. So you see the area there, uh, between the purple and the red line, so that green and shaded area, uh, south of Main Street. That's the big change between one and two. Uh, well, now we had to keep one connected, so that's why you have that thin strip there. Uh, there's not really another way to do that. I mean, there, there are other ways to do it, but, you know, again, it would involve changing the other districts. So that was kind of the easy way of doing it, and Main Street seemed like a, a nice identifiable boundary. And then, Josh, why don't we look up in the, on the west side, uh, where two came into four? Uh, and then you can see there, I don't believe there was a lot of population there. I think it was probably a couple of hundred people, if that.
Not much at this point.
Yeah, he can select these things and total it up for us. Okay, so you can see the blue box on the top left has population eighty-seven. Uh, that means eighty-seven people live in the highlighted area. Uh, so that's not, not a lot of people, uh, it's a lot of territory. Uh, and that's what I was talking about before, you know, sometimes when you're looking to keep, uh, a district together or, you know, a school district, city council district, a ward, whatever, Commissioner's precinct. Um, it's sometimes difficult to go around the edges, because people tend to be congregated in a town, uh, in the center. So, uh, it's not that productive to kind of go around the sides. Um, but it is something we can do. Uh, but to have two, two would then curl further around four, which would maybe be even an odder shape. And I believe, are those the only major changes, Josh? I think we did make a little change down in the very south around, yeah, right there, uh, by the, is it a water treatment plant, is that what it is? I believe that's right. Um, so we did make a little change down there. Uh, it seemed to kind of naturally go to, there was a little bit of population there to put into two. Not a lot, it could easily go back to one. Um, but it, it seemed kind of logical, just because we were trying to come across, there's a road there, you see that arc, um, is a road, uh, and that connects it down to the right wastewater treatment plant. So there is a way of connecting that without involving any population at all. Uh, it's really kind of one of those optional things that you can do. Um, you know, why it was drawn that way, I'm not entirely sure, but it's there. So those were the main changes, really, the only changes of Plan A. Um, like I said, Plan B was much more dramatic. Um, but, you know, we wanted to kind of give you an idea of what that would look like. Um, but then we can do anything you want, uh, something in between.
Yeah, I, I, I think to minimize change, I'm, I'm, with the others, I think Plan A is probably the best, the best way.
Okay, are there any particular things of Plan A you want to look at or maybe move around? I mean, maybe there's, there might be little areas around the edges, uh, of your wards that you think would fit better, uh, in a neighbor's ward, or maybe your neighbor has, uh, you know, a neighborhood that you think would fit better in yours. Um, there are still little changes we can make to, to do it, um, you know, to kind of straighten things up. If you think it's always weird that, you know, this side of the street was one ward and this was another, that's something we can look at, um, but it may not be. I mean, maybe, maybe everything is, is fine the way it is.
Roy, do you want to arm wrestle for the waste treatment plant?
Oh, yeah, no, 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 we, we, we okay.
So where do we go from here? Uh, yep, fr- so from here, uh, we can just pause. Uh, we can, uh, so you have the, the PDFs of this map, uh, and then we can send you, um, either, so this file format is called a shape file, uh, and send it to you all, and I don't know if you have G I S. Yeah, um, that y'all can print out, you know, big versions of this map or in greater detail, or we can do it and print them and send them to you. Um, and then, you know, uh, receive public feedback.
Right, Mary, we, we can, we can, we have a G I S phone, so we can, we can get the shape files from Mr. Arnold and his team, and, and we'll be able to get those printouts for you. Uh, Ms., Ms. Hilton's going to come and just talk to you about some of the next steps, some of the upcoming dates that we've got going, so.
Yeah, so, um, like, uh, City Manager Mario Kinsore said, we'll send you those, uh, maps, so you can view those in your own time. And then we'll have a second work session on December sixth. And that's not during a regular meeting, that'll be a special meeting just for this item, where you'll have the opportunity to kind of go through this process again, redraw those, those, those district lines, allow for additional public input on those proposed plans. Um, and then the final adoption wouldn't be until January eighteenth. Now, we have built in a couple of public presentations between that December sixth work session and the final adoption. And so staff is planning to host some public presentations in conjunction with the I S D, and just invite the community and just present those, uh, those final plans and the process and how we got to where we are. And so we'll include that feedback in the final meeting as well. But those won't be city council meetings, they'll just be kind of general community meetings. Uh, but we will advertise for those, just in case we have a quorum and, uh, council wants to attend. And so, um, again, the next step is the December sixth work session, where we'll do the same process again, redraw these if necessary, allow public input. Um, staff will conduct those public presentations in early January, and then January eighteenth would be that final adoption date.
For, for that December sixth, Mr. Arnold, I believe, will be remote. He won't be present, since we've kind of covered the majority of the work here tonight. Uh, so he'll be remote, but we'll make sure that the G I S component and, and Mr. Arnold's comments will be available.
I think having those maps in hand, where we can see them enlarged and maybe drive the streets and understand the changes, will be helpful. And we can have, certainly have that done before that meeting. All right, thank you.
And if we're good, just one, one thing, I, I think the public hearing aspect of it, it's really important. It's one thing we really recommend, is to get the community feedback on the changes, uh, and to see what people say and want, uh, because that can really, I think, help y'all understand what the public wants. Uh, but it also really gives the public a chance to have really buy-in and input into the process, uh, so that they don't feel like it's, you know, somebody who came into town and presented a map to you.
But they can also make comments on not a plan, right? They could come up with their own plan?
Yes, sir, they can come up with their own plans. So the guidelines, uh, you all adopted at the last meeting, uh, one of the resolutions, uh, has a set of guidelines for the public to follow if they want to submit a plan. Uh, one major requirement, I would say, because it, it comes up a lot, is sometimes people want to draw only one ward or district, uh, but they really need to draw the whole, they have to draw the whole city. Uh, because you can't make a change to one piece without affecting everything. Uh, as you can see, I mean, it, it, you could move one little block and capture two hundred people, and it's going to throw everything off balance. Um, so if they do want to submit a plan, uh, it should be a whole plan. Uh, that's not to say you can't consider partial changes, or somebody thinking their street should be in one ward or another. Um, but, uh, that would be our recommendation.
As long as it meets the population criteria, though, right?
Yes, sir, and they have to meet the same criteria we do. So it has to have the same ten percent deviation. Um, and then it should meet the other criteria, following identifiable boundaries, you know, streets and creeks, um, and trying to keep neighborhoods of interest together, uh, communities of interest together. Um, and, you know, all, all the, there's nine criteria, I believe, um, so they should meet those as well.
Thank you.
Oh, sure, yes.
When you say "they" in the public, you mean, I mean, like, any member of the public can say, I came up with this map, and this is what I want to propose? Or is it like groups of people? How, how does that, like, practically play out?
Practically, uh, it would probably be, um, some sort of special interest group. Um, the, um, you know, just because the, if you want to use software like this, it's expensive. Uh, there are free online things you can do, though, uh, and there are websites that let you do them. Uh, they're not one hundred percent accurate, because they tend to follow the census boundary lines of what the census thinks your city limits are, which I can tell you from experience, there are minor differences all over the edges of your cities, where it may follow down one side of a street versus another. And that may not include any houses, but because of the way the census builds their maps, there would be little, three people off here, four people off here, and that adds up as you go around the whole perimeter of a city. So the map we use is the map you give us. So the map we use is the map you give us, that says, "This is our city limit." The census has asked you, you know, I'm sure, two years ago, three years ago, for your city limits, but they may have changed ever so slightly. You may have annexed something, or the, the census may have made a little error. You know, they do this throughout the entire country, so they're not giving it the level of attention that we are and that you do. So that is kind of a disclaimer, that the online mapping stuff will get you ninety-five percent of the way there, maybe a hundred percent, but there may be little differences. So if somebody uses the, the online ones, they can definitely be helpful, but they may not be perfectly accurate. So if they send it to you and you want us to put it into our software and look at it and analyze it, make sure it's perfect, we will do that, we can do that. But there will probably be little, little problems with it here or there. That doesn't mean it's bad, it just means we have to go in and fix it.
Okay, thank you.
How are we going to publicize this part? When does, when do people get to see where we are right now, and how are they told to give the feedback?
So at the end of this work session, we will open it up for public comment, so we'll allow the public to actually comment this evening on the discussion that we've had. And we posted that meeting. We'll do the same thing for the work session, we'll, we'll post that, we'll put it online, we'll put it on Facebook, we'll put it in the, in the, in the newspaper, make sure that people are aware, hey, we're having this meeting. And we'll do the same thing for the other meetings. The adoption will actually be a public hearing, so we'll, that'll get a little bit more notices, but it'll be very similar to the same other notices that we do for our other public meetings, but we'll try to do above and beyond by really pushing it out there on our email list and social media and things like that.
Including the process for how to submit a different.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Perspective. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Are there any comments from the public regarding redistricting? I know it's exciting. Okay. All right, well, we appreciate your presentation and look forward to finish wrapping this up maybe in hopefully early December. Okay?
Thank you for driving here.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we'll, we'll recess until our regular meeting starts at five-thirty. It is five-thirty, and, and certainly do appreciate all of you being here with us tonight. I apologize for the delay, but we needed to wait until five-thirty to begin our meeting. And so we will now resume, and we will resume with open forum, and we have one speaker for open forum tonight. Open forum is a time to address the council on any matter related to the city that is not on tonight's agenda. And, and Ms. Keenan?
Yes, my name is Ann Keenan, and I live at six-oh-nine East Hospital Street. And I just wanted to mention to you all today, I know that you know that the United Nations Climate Summit has just ended. Countries from all over the world were talking about different ways to avoid the terrible effects that our children and grandchildren will suffer if we do not take action to keep the climate under control and stop global warming, and really stop using fossil fuels the way we've been doing. So I, I know that the countries have made some pledges, and they'll have to keep them for this to be successful. We are members of a country, we're members of a community, we also have an obligation, just like the countries and the people at the conference do, to do what we can to take care of this issue. And I just wanted to, to put it out there that we all, and especially as a city, consider the effects of climate change whenever we're making decisions, and have that as part of what we're thinking about, because it is there, as someone has said, the house is on fire. Another idea may be, if we wanted to have a mayor's committee on sustainability, or something along those lines, that we could have a committee and a community of people that you can look to, to, to look at different issues, make recommendations like some of the other committees do. So that was a suggestion, I had that idea and thought I'd pass it on to you, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Keenan.
All right, bye-bye.
Okay, we'll move to number five, items to be removed from the consent agenda. Are there any?
Yes, yes, Mayor. I would like to remove from the consent agenda item six-D.
Okay.
Please.
Anything else? I, I think I would like to remove six-F, just for comment. Anybody else? Okay, so do I have a, a motion to approve the remaining items under the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved, Mr. Anderson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bolden? Any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, so we will move on and call six-D, and I think Mr. Kirkland can address that one. Consider, let me read it, I'm sorry, consider tax resale authorization for lot eighteen-two, block forty-three outlet in the city of Nacogdoches, as described in warranty deed, record volume one-oh-four, page five-forty-seven, on instrument filed May fourteen, nineteen-twenty-seven, in Nacogdoches County, Texas, under parcel number two-three-six-six-nine, item one-seven-dash-oh-four-three-dash-ten-eighteen-dash-oh-two-zero-zero-zero-zero.
Mayor, this is a very low-ball bid on a parcel of property, which is not necessarily a high-value property. But the taxes, past due taxes are eleven thousand, it's appraised at eight thousand, and the bid is nine hundred dollars. The only advantage to taking the bid would be to put it back on the tax rolls and start getting taxes again, which is, in many cases, often the best option. Staff hasn't had a chance to fully vet all the options on this one, so we would ask that you defer consideration of this, so we have a chance to make sure there are no better options.
Now, the eleven thousand, is that city tax, or is that, is that all of the property tax?
It's all the collective properties, all the, all the tax of all the entities.
And then we would, so we would all have to agree?
So, yeah, the process would be, if you approved it tonight, it would then go to the county and the school district for approval. By pulling it tonight, you're not stopping that process, but all three of us have to agree at separate meetings.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that, that's fine with me. I was concerned with, with that being a really low bid, sorry, and what, what other options we had that might, that might provide for that tax revenue to get restarted, but also it might be more beneficial to the community as a whole.
We're, we were concerned about that as well, and we just really hadn't had a chance to fully vet all the possible options. There may be other options, there may not be, this may be the best option. But we, we can't tell you that tonight, so we ask you to let us, give it, give it, give us some more vetting.
Sounds good to me.
Right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Of the nine hundred dollars, how does that money split between the three entities?
So probably about half of it would go to the tax, to the school district, because I think their taxes are about half of the total tax bill. And then we would get a quarter and a quarter, or whatever that pro-rata share is.
What are the possibilities of that property going to, like, a nonprofit organization at rehab homes, either also build from the ground up? And that's being not in the bid process, because that wasn't the first bid, right? That was the, the first bid?
So the property had been struck off in September.
Right.
And so this was, it was in fact, the only bid. We have an additional five vehicles that we are going to open up for bid, and so by doing that, anybody can, can vote, I mean, vote, anybody can bid on that. And so I feel confident that we will get at least one, maybe, maybe two or three local vendors that are, are wanting to do that. At this point, we've had another vehicle that has kind of met its demise, so I think what you probably will see in January, when we come back to you with a bid for, it's probably going to be an additional six vehicles, maybe even seven, depending on what happens between now and January, that will go through the real formal bid process. So these tonight are the ones that we could get within our budget and get on order immediately, and then the other six, we're going to cross our fingers and hope we don't miss the, the manufacturing deadline in January to get those after we do the bid, the full bid process. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. Any, any questions for?
No, thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
No, no, no. Thank you, Ms. Carbo. So do I have a motion to approve F, 6F?
So moved.
Ms. Bellinger, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Anderson, thank you. Any further discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, thank you. So that moves us to number seven, the regular agenda. Consider, A, consider a resolution casting city of Nacogdoches votes for the Nacogdoches Central Appraisal, District Board of Directors, City Manager, Canizares.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, good evening. This will be real quick. The Board of Directors for the Central Appraisal District is in the process of seeking votes for their new board. The board term expires at the end of this year. Mayor Mize is our current representative for the city of Nacogdoches on the CAD Central Appraisal District Board, and so the other, and then the new term would begin January 1st. At a number of meetings ago, we were going to the process of just seeking who we would want to at least nominate, and Mr. Anderson, Jay Anderson, was, was your nominee, and so we're here tonight to cast the vote for Mr. Anderson to be the city of Nacogdoches representative. Just as an FYI for the public, there's, the board consists of five members. One, the city of Nacogdoches has one board member, or one member on the board. Nacogdoches ISD has two members on the board, Nacogdoches County has one, and if I understand correctly, the smaller school districts have a representative on the board as well. And so for slate, really, we're just voting for Mr. Anderson, but for, to be slated for the appraisal district board is Jonathan Adams, Jay Anderson for the city of Nacogdoches, Robin Dolly for Nacogdoches County, Reverend James Irvin, and Mindy Winslow for Nacogdoches ISD. Just as a side note, Judge Greg Sal, Superintendent Gabe Trujillo, and myself met with the interim chief appraiser, Jeff Mallett, yesterday. It was a good, he's been on the role, in the role for about six weeks, started October 1st. Just really wanted to say hello and just obviously welcome him to the fold in his new role and, and just really offer our support. He's very excited about his position and, and the opportunity to, to lead the organization. They got a number of projects slated to work on after the first of the year, some technological improvements that they're trying to, to implement, to make their work easier with technology, and also hiring a number of staff members. They've had some retirements recently, so they're trying to rebuild their staff. So it's a good opportunity for a new board to come in with fresh ideas and, and just a different perspective and, and help in that process. So with that, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Thank you, Jason Mallett.
Mallett, yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve agenda, item 7A, as written.
I'll second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Cat Curies, thank you, Mr. Anderson, for taking on that, that role. Happy to do it. Okay, we'll move on to 7B, public hearing. Consider a resolution directing city staff to file an application under Code of Ordinance 118-137C1 to amend the boundaries of a zoning district within the city of Nacogdoches from R4 multifamily to R2 single-family for lot 12, city block 41, located at 1102 Logan's Port Street, which was previously considered by the city council at the request of RJ Bohack on August 18, 2020. Council member, northeast, northeast ward, Ms. Bellinger, had asked that it be, be put on the agenda at the, earlier this year, at the October 12, 2021 meeting. This, and then it was delayed until November 16, 2021, and so here, here we are tonight, and so with this, I'll open the public hearing, and I believe we have a presentation.
Yep, sure.
So can you pull up the presentation, please? Okay, so I'd like to begin by clarifying a few things. First of all, while I do reside on Logan's Port Street, the decision to upzone 1102 Logan's Port Street for multifamily housing and apartments, and I'm quoting the Nacogdoches Municipal Code, has no economic impact on my property one way or the other. Instead, I've asked for this public hearing as a representative of the 39 people, and many more now, by the way, who could not get a hearing before the city council. I'm also representing the people who elected me, who are very concerned about our city, about this property, and about how we do business. Finally, I'm representing all of the people who worked hard on the current comprehensive plan that specifically identifies the entire neighborhood as single-family residential. That's zones R1, R2, and R3, but not R4, that's multifamily, with a future land use map that directs all of us to work to accomplish the preservation of the neighborhood and protection of the park. So it's necessary, once again, to clarify that both the sale and the rezoning was accomplished in the dead of COVID lockdowns with no signs on the property. The rezoning from R2 to R4 was accomplished by the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And finally, Nacogdoches City Ordinance 118-273 clearly identifies R4 zoning as multifamily apartments and R3 zoning as single-family attached or duplexes. People desiring to build duplexes ask for R3 zoning. It is the proper, if the property requires variances, these are requested through the Board of Variances. Instead, the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission asked for and received R4 zoning for apartments. So today, I've been asked to present to you a summary of the very flawed process that resulted in the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission obtaining controversial rezoning of his own property, and then ended up ignoring the concerns of the neighborhood and many, many others. So here we are. There are several major issues involved in this flawed process. There are actually five of them, conflict of interest, comprehensive plan, the staff report, adverse impact, and spot zoning. So I'm going to go through each one of these, one at a time. So first of all, let me go back here. There's a conflict of interest and preferential treatment in this matter. So Texas law, the cardinal rule of public service enshrined in the Texas Municipal Code, is that public servants must put the people's interests above their own. Planning commissioners are prohibited from participating in manners, participating in matters related to real property where they have a substantial interest. So Mr. Bohack was chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission and also the applicant for this rezoning. He was required to submit a letter explaining why the comprehensive plan should be changed for rezoning contrary to the future land use map, and this step was skipped. He recused himself at the planning and zoning hearing, but he turned the gavel over to his business colleague, who is now his business partner. He didn't leave the room of the planning and zoning hearing, and in fact, is, on the Zoom hearing, actually appears. There were no questions or discussion by any planning and zoning members before approving drastic change, the drastic change from R2 to R4, and this is very unusual, there's almost always discussion in the planning and zoning meeting. There were also misrepresentations, which I'll go into a little later, misleading statements and omissions in the city planner's report that justified the rezoning, and Mr. Bohack appeared at the city council meeting to advocate for his rezoning request. So all of these show some conflict of interest there. Mr. Bohack said he plans to build duplexes, which only require R3 zoning, but he was granted R4 zoning for apartments to avoid platting costs and the appeals to the zoning board of adjustments. The city agreed to upgrade the part of Logan's Port Street in front of Mr. Bohack's property at the taxpayers' expense, and 39 neighbors signed a petition for a reconsideration, but they were denied that. So the comprehensive plan and the city ordinances were disregarded. So I'm going to show you this map. Looks a little small here, but if you'll notice here, single-family residential is yellow, is shown as yellow here on the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, and I have the entire comprehensive plan up there, if anybody wants to see it, but this is the map taken straight out of the future, out of the comprehensive plan. And you can see that yellow is single-family residential, but orange is multifamily residential, and that means attached dwellings with three or more units, including apartments, townhouses, condominiums, patio homes, rooming, boarding houses, nursing homes, assisted living developments. So notice, yellow is single-family residential, and again, that could be R1, R2, or R3, but multifamily is orange. So let's see where Logan's Port Street is, and you can see all of Logan's Port Street, even to the park, that green area up at the top is, is the park, and all of Logan's Port Street on both sides is single-family residential, which means R1, R2, and R3. And here, I'd like to make just one little aside, even though there's zoning of some R4 and in, in this area, it is all, it is all single-family residential, it is occupied as single-family residential, and even the zoning areas are sometimes misleading because people have platted the areas and have actually made subdivisions. So this is what we need to be looking at, which is the future land use map. This is what people intended when they did the comprehensive plan in 2003. They intended for this area to be single-family residential. Now, this shows exactly where the property in question is, it's in that red area, and some people who are much better at doing PowerPoints than I am, put that little red area so that you can see it. It's definitely within the yellow zone, the intended single-family residential area. I'll let you look at that for just a second. So, since this is all part of the comprehensive plan, and by the way, this is the one place where Logan's Port Street is specifically mentioned, there are general areas, the general kind of goals and philosophies stated in the comprehensive plan, but here, let me go back here and just show you this one more time, this is where Logan's Port Street is mentioned in the, the comprehensive plan, in the future land, land use map. So that's the intention in the comprehensive plan. So, section 211.004 of the Texas Local Government Code states that zoning regulations must be in accordance with a comprehensive plan. City Ordinance, section 118-138, the city council may approve rezoning only if the city council determines that the request or amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This is our current comprehensive plan, the 2003 plan. R4 is contrary to the future land use map in the comprehensive plan. Again, City Ordinance, section 118-139, condition for approval of zoning change is the proposed use is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. R4 is contrary to the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan. City Ordinance, section 118-173, a zoning change may be approved if all of the following conditions have been found, and number three is that the supporting facilities are there, that we have adequate utilities and access roads, and anyone who walks down there knows we do not have an adequate access road there. The street is clearly inadequate, the city has to upgrade at the taxpayers' expense, and city staff failed to address street deficiency in the staff report. And number eight, in the City Ordinance, section 118-173, the comprehensive plan, the proposed use is in accordance with the comprehensive plan, and that's not true. In this, in this situation, R4 is contrary to future land use map in the comprehensive plan. And here we have a picture of this great access road that's in front of the property, and as you can see, some people say there's room for two cars, but I have never encountered two cars, and in fact, recently, somebody who was approaching drove up on somebody's front yard to pass them up on the street. So I, I don't see that it's passable by two cars, maybe. There are ditches there, there's a ditch on one side, there's that brick wall on the other side, so you can see the road needs a lot of work. area so that you can see it. It's definitely within the yellow zone, the intended "single-family residential" area. I'll let you look at that for just a second. So, since this is all part of the comprehensive plan, and by the way, this is the one place where Logan's Port Street is specifically mentioned. There are general areas, the general kind of goals and philosophies stated in the comprehensive plan, but here, let me go back here and just show you this one more time. This is where Logan's Port Street is mentioned in the, the comprehensive plan, in the future land, land use map. So that's the intention in the comprehensive plan. So Section 211.004 of the Texas Local Government Code states that zoning regulations must be in accordance with a comprehensive plan. City Ordinance, Section 118-138, "The city council may approve rezoning only if the city council determines that the request or amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan." This is our current comprehensive plan, the 2003 plan. R4 is contrary to the future land use map in the comprehensive plan. Again, City Ordinance, Section 118-139, "Condition for approval of zoning change is: The proposed use is in accordance with the comprehensive plan." R4 is contrary to the future land use map of the comprehensive plan and the comprehensive plan. City Ordinance, Section 118-173, "A zoning change may be approved if all of the following conditions have been found." And number three is that the supporting facilities are there, that we have adequate utilities and access roads. And anyone who walks down there knows, we do not have an adequate access road there. The street is clearly inadequate. The city has to upgrade at the taxpayers' expense. And city staff failed to address street deficiency in the staff report. And number eight, in the City Ordinance, Section 118-173, "The comprehensive plan, the proposed use is in accordance with the comprehensive plan." And that's not true. In this, in this situation, R4 is contrary to future land use map in the comprehensive plan. And here we have a picture of this great access road that's in front of the property. And as you can see, some people say there's room for two cars, but I have never encountered two cars. And in fact, recently, somebody who was approaching drove up on somebody's front yard to pass them up on the street. So I, I don't see that it's passable by two cars, maybe. There are ditches there, there's a ditch on one side, there's that brick wall on the other side. So you can see the road needs a lot of work and will be very, very expensive to repair. And, and if we widen the road, we are taking in other people's property across the street. And here is one of my favorite that I walk by, I actually think of, of Naomi and Russell Simmons when I walk by every time and think fondly of them and actually say a prayer for them. So we would not want to go into that property. And I don't know if you could see from the one before it, well, you can't see it, but there's a fire hydrant right across the street from it too. So that's a property that concerns me. So City Ordinance, Section 118-4, "If the zone change request differs from what the comprehensive plan recommends, the city planner will request from the applicant a written letter stating the reasons the comprehensive plan should be changed, and the required letter was not requested or provided." And this is actually a procedural error that may have very well impacted the resulting decision by the council. So we've covered the issues related to the conflict of interest. We've also covered now issues related to the comprehensive plan. There were also several instances where the staff report was wrong or had omissions. And remember, all this was during COVID, so I'm not saying anybody here is, you know, because there are mistakes that there, we all make mistakes, but we need to correct them. That's really where I'm coming from. And so here's the, some of the mistakes in the staff report. "This rezoning is in response to current needs for housing." Well, it's really actually in response to the need that Mr. Bohack had and his desire for rental income. But there's no shortage of student housing and in fact apartments, which is what this is. If, if there are other kinds of housing needs, then we need to zone for those housing needs, not for apartments. "Adequate infrastructure exists." I hope you all saw that we do not have adequate roads for this. "The section of Logan's Port Street in front of Mr. Bohack's property is barely passable," which I still don't see how you could both pass there, "but by two vehicles. There's no curb and gutter, there are deep ditches, it's not paved." So we definitely don't have the infrastructure. "R4 zoning should not adversely impact adjacent land uses, and the entire neighborhood opposed the rezoning because of increased traffic and change of character and appearance of the historic neighborhood." And also, it, there have been many people who have said it adversely impacts the park, particularly if R4 remains and spreads to its adjacent property. "The comprehensive plan and future land use map is not to be used on a parcel-by-parcel level." Well, the city ordinance says that the applicant has to submit a written explanation for rezoning contrary to what the comprehensive plan recommends. So. "Logan's Port Street is a local street which functions as primary access for residential uses in the area." And that's a little misleading here because the north part of Logan's Port Street in front of the property in question is a narrow, unimproved lane that really is access to Beacon Acres Park. So that needs to be considered when we're thinking about what access we're looking at. And this is one of the most important things to see, is that every single lot on Logan's Port Street is used for single-family residences. Any, the, the R4 rezoning is a drastic change on the street where every lot is a single-family residence. Remember, it doesn't make a difference in this situation that there were, were prior to the 2003 comprehensive plan, there are R4 properties, but they're not used for that. In fact, people have been plating and subdividing so that it's still single-family residences. So every single lot on Logan's Port Street is used for single-family residences, which I assume is part of why the comprehensive plan continues that, that it's single-family residences. So the reason the comprehensive plan should be changed was omitted. And, and really, we have no changed circumstances or other reasons that were given for changing the future land use map in the comprehensive plan. So, and the circumstances on the street haven't changed. So adverse impact is the next issue here. So the first adverse impact is, let me make sure I have, okay. Apartment buildings, and not just duplexes, will be permitted in the R4 zone. Mr. Bohack's stated development plan is irrelevant because Mr. Bohack can sell the property or just change his mind and decide to build apartments. If it remains R4, and, and at any time, people can build apartments right there. And the adjacent four and a half acres can now be rezoned from R2 to R4. And I'd like to just read a little bit out of a court case that talked about rezoning. There are lots that are, that were designated R4 prior to all this and to, to the adoption of the comprehensive plan, but they can't be used to justify ignoring the overall intent of the comprehensive plan. And there's a Supreme Court case, I won't, I'll give it to our attorney if he wants it, but I actually have it printed off. I'll show it to you. I got it up there, but I'm going to quote from it that, that it concluded that, that even though there were non-conforming issues, let me just get down. "The comprehensive plan's designation of single-family residential, residential use for Logan's Port Street basically means there should be no more lots, zoned R4 lots in this area." And here's a quote, "If the zoned area may be encroached upon from the edge," which means, you know, we encroach here, "the effect thereof is to cause the comprehensive plan to collapse like the fall of a row of dominoes when the first in the row is knocked over." So this is, let me show you that again. I'm going to go right back here. So that, that strip then can make the fall of the other four and a half acres go to apartments, and that is contrary to the comprehensive plan. And that's exactly what this court case is talking about. It's like one domino that then affects the others. So there we go. I hope you don't ask me legal questions. Okay. So I'm back to adverse impact. And as we all know, if apartments are placed on this particular property, then more apartments will follow on adjacent property, and the historic character of Logan's Port Street and the park also will be endangered. So there will be substantial cost to taxpayers for necessary street improvements in front of the property. The historic entrance to Beacon Acres Park will be destroyed. There will be increased traffic on Logan's Port Street, which is now entirely single-family residences with young children and elderly. And I think I'm included as elderly. Finally, spot zoning. In fact, that's what that case related to, was spot zoning. "The Texas Supreme Court describes spot zoning as an unacceptable amendment of the zoning ordinance that singles out a small tract for preferential treatment contrary to the comprehensive plan. All of the elements of unlawful spot zoning apply to this rezoning. It's a single lot, there was preferential treatment, it's contrary to the comprehensive plan, the current zoning is suitable for the existing use, and rezoning is not justified by changed circumstances, nothing has changed in that area, and there's a substantial adverse impact on the surrounding land." We did want to talk about the role of COVID-19 in this. If you all would remember back to August of 2020. So the notification period was at the peak of COVID-19. People were less aware, they had less contact, and nearly every other public entity took these circumstances into consideration in its procedures. But the city provided the bare minimum notice of this application. And I don't, I don't know if you remember, we didn't even see that our next-door neighbors, we were in total lockdown at that particular time. We had difficulty with our newspaper getting delivered, and there were changes and all kinds of things that were happening. So all this was right in the heart of, of the lockdowns we had in COVID-19. And you can see here, this is just an article about the number of cases in Nacogdoches County continued to rise. There were 50, there were 120 active cases, up from 56 during this time period. And since Wednesday, the state has added two more fatalities, bringing the total for Nacogdoches County to 84 residents. Eighty-four people had died by that time. And so people were afraid, they were not thinking of, of things beyond COVID-19. And the city actually recognized that extra measures needed to be taken because of COVID-19, because in, in order to engage citizens and other matters, but those measures weren't taken for this rezoning notification. So, and this has to do with getting residents to complete the 2020 census. So there were extra time, a lot of other things that came into play. So this was the heart of COVID. We actually had, there weren't any signs out there to alert people, so people really were not aware of, of what was happening. We had no human contact, that was one of the issues. So here's. This is the conclusion. "The city council has the authority to initiate a request for zoning map amendments per City Ordinance, Section 118-137(c)(1). Due to the numerous problems with this rezoning, the city council should exercise its authority and initiate a request to restore the zoning of this property from R4 back to R2." And this basically, this basically just resets it for, for the applicant to go through the process. So I ask that we simply reset the zoning to R2 and allow any requests by the developer to upzone the property, going through all the proper channels with transparency. And I don't know if you have any questions of me, and I'll hand you that other case if you like, or any of the ordinances, but there are plenty of people who are willing to speak. Remember, I, I am standing in for a lot of people who care very much about this issue.
Anything now, or do you, or maybe later in the presentation? Possibly?
Later.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you all.
Yeah, we reserve the right to ask you to come back.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
I'll be here.
Okay. And I think with that, offer maybe Mr. Bohack an opportunity?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank y'all for having me this, this evening. To be real honest with you, I, I haven't done a presentation. I, I figured the best way to, to talk this out is to have questions and ask of me, I'm, I'm standing here, and so I felt like the best way to, to resolve any issues was to stand before you. I, I've tried to do that, and that's where I'm at. You know, I, I'm not an enemy of this city in any way. I've been portrayed that way, and so I, I'm here just to, to answer any questions of anybody that they have. I care very much for this city. You know, I, there's some half-truths in some of that, but that's beside the point. But I, I want to answer any questions that they have while I'm standing here looking face to face. So that's where I would like to, to start, and I know that y'all probably have a bunch of questions, and so I think we start with that, if that's okay.
Okay. Procedurally, Mr. Kirkland? Are questions appropriate from the council? Okay, all right. Counsel, anyone like to begin? Mr. Anderson?
I'll start, sure. At any point in this process, over 16 months now, I believe, did you, when addressed by concerned citizens, did you offer compromise? And if so, in what form? Did you offer to downzone? Did you offer to create a plan development, or at least explore that possibility in?
There's been at least three opportunities. First and foremost, we met, Jeff Davis was part of most of those, but our previous city attorney, but yeah, there was plan development, had been thrown out at least twice. R3 had been thrown out at least once, and it was met with opposition every time. I, I've tried my best to, as everyone says, extended olive branch, and every single time was completely shot down with no rebuttal saying, let's, let's talk this out. I mean, that's what my job is to negotiate, let's sit down, let's face to face. I'm, I'm an eye-to-eye, face-to-face, let's, let's talk this out, and we can come to resolution. I, I haven't gotten anything, it's either all or nothing, and so I, you know, that's just where I've, it's, it's what's been portrayed, portrayed to me, so.
That was my understanding, I just wanted to clarify that. That's a feature at this point, yeah.
I have a follow-up. When you said they were all shot down, by whom? Who, who shot it down?
Whoever, the different people that I've talked to with Jeff and just different people, they, they've come back to me and said, they were a spokesperson, whoever it was, for, for, for Ms. Ballinger, that said, you know, that they, they were not interested in discussing anything with me. I, I've never had the chance to meet with Ms. Ballinger. I, I would love the opportunity to have met with her. You know, I'm easy to reach, I mean, that's my job is to, to be easy to be found, so, I mean, I would love the opportunity, but that, that hasn't materialized.
One more question for you. Your, your stated plan is to build duplexes which would fit into an R3 zoning, correct? So then why was the ask from the council for R4 instead of R3?
That was what was presented to me from the city.
The city proposed an R4, a jump from R2 to R4?
No, not necessarily that, we just said that that was the easiest way. There was an issue with a, there was going to be a stubbed-out road somewhere down the property. And they said if you go to R4, that you would not have to do that.
You would not have to do what?
To put the stubbed-out road.
Okay. So, and that would save you time, effort?
Yeah.
Money? Okay.
It wasn't about density in any way.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for, are we able to, Mr. Rohack, if you're okay with it, as, as this unfolds, call you back up?
Sure.
If that's okay with you?
I just put a chair right here.
And I'm going to go ahead and take my turn as we go across. Tell me about the stubbed-out road, what do you, what does that mean?
So they, they were saying that there was, has to be two accesses on the back piece of the property, on that 4.12 acres or whatever it is. And so there's, there's an access at the end, up close to whatever street that is. And then they, they were supposed to be another access, like a, like you see in subdivisions, like it'll be just another road that comes off of Logan's Port that goes through my property, but then dead ends into the property behind me, so.
Okay, so can you be more descriptive as far as what you would like to do on the property?
I, I would.
Is it, is it one duplex? Is it four duplexes? What, what, what's your thought?
Well, I mean, the, the whole thing is that everybody's saying apartments, all these other things, and the whole issue is, that's not my intention in any way, shape, or form, but there's no room for that. I mean, the whole issue, let's just walk through it, the, the basic facts are facts, that, that first of all, the city requires, or the, that you have to have 14,000 square feet of permeable space, non-permeable space. If you have any more than that, you have to go to a retention pond. So that, that's the first and foremost, that, so you have to figure out what's your driveway, that is impermeable, your, your roofs that are impermeable, and then it has to be under 14,000 square feet. So that limits it, the size of the lot limits it, and so my intention was never to build apartments, there's, it's just not feasibly, it's not even possible, but that's not my intention. My intention is to fit no more than four, because there's just not the room. And so, you know, it was a townhouse-style, nice duplexes that, you know, I, I thought would fit the character, they're not going to be cookie cutter in any way, they were going to have a lot of character, much like the ones that are on, across from Mowgrove Cemetery. I can't think of the name of this street, but anyway, something similar to that is, is my intention, so.
So now when you say four, is that four units, or is that four double u, is that eight total?
It's eight total.
Eight total.
Four buildings.
Okay.
So, and, you know, it's, like I said again, it's not a cookie cutter style deal, it was something that was going to be nice. It was something that was gonna be nice and add your bill to the neighborhood and, and, you know, uh, be really nice. I mean, it's, this is a long-term deal, it's not something I'm trying to sell, it's something I want, and I want to look at. You know, it's something that I, I, I care very much for this community. It's not like I'm a developer from Houston just coming here to develop something. I, I care about this community just as much as every one of you do. And so, it's not like I'm trying to build trash to, to do that, that's not my intention, so.
Who do you anticipate your end-user to be?
I don't know. I mean, it, it could be students, but I'm, I'm hoping they'll be nicer than that and so, there'll be hopefully professors or, um, workers or something like that. There's a big need for that, I'm in real estate, I see it every day, that there's, um, you know, traveling nurses. That's something of, you know, traveling doctors that need furnished apartments, furnished living space. Uh, so, I, I'm, I've got one now, like, it's a furnished living space that i- it, it, it gets very good rent and it's, it's a professional that lives, that's from, from Louisiana that comes and stays during the week, you know? And so, uh, that's really where I'd like to be, because that's the highest of issues.
Thank you. Mr. Bolden?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bohack, it, it's been noted that there was multiple errors in the process overall from the very beginning. Would you be willing to start the process over again since we could, uh, do it the correct way, the legal way?
To be honest with you, everyone that I've talked to that was involved in it, um, you know, including Jeff Davis, who was the city attorney at the time, said it was done legally and done correctly. And so, that's just where I, you know, I, I don't understand, I really don't. I mean, I just felt like that everyone that they've talked to and everyone that has said that, I mean, I'm about a compromise, but at the same time, i- it was done correctly is what I've been told and I did it by the book through the city. And so, uh, you know, at this point, I, I, I don't see why that would be necessary.
Thank you.
Ms. Ballinger?
Um, the only thing I wanted to say is it's nice to meet you.
You as well, you as well.
But, um, I haven't been part of any negotiations, so.
Okay.
I just want to clarify that, so. And, um, really, the concern is R4 zoning and it's, um, and I think it would be very wise to start again and, um, and do it right. And I'd love to see that happen.
So, I guess my question is, is so the, 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 the people that were involved in it in the city were, didn't do it correctly? The, the attorneys and Elena and Steve Bartlett and city attorney, and, and everybody, that, everybody was wrong? I'm, I'm just asking.
Well, I just gave a, a, a presentation that showed several errors. And again, um, this isn't about individuals or people being, it's, it's about a process and we really do need to, uh, do things well. And, uh, so, that's all, my only comment.
Okay.
Someday, I'd love to buy you a beer.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I think there are other-
Any, anything else?
Um, I guess real quickly, uh, first of all, to clarify, I think when you, when you were talking about, um, Ms. Ballinger as, as being a representative, her husband, I believe, was, was acting in that capacity for some of the concerned neighbors, so that, that may be the confusion there. Um, I guess my question to you is, um, you know, is something like R3 or planned development still something you're willing to consider as a compromise, um, at this point?
That, to be honest with you, that's in sixteen months, I've had that discussion. I don't know who was on the other end of that. I assumed it was someone else, but, um, I, I've tried numerous times a- and was shot down every time. And so, at this point, I, I, I'm, no, I, I'm ready to move forward.
Okay.
You know, I, I've tried my best, that's why I've delayed this, to, to try to make sure everybody was comfortable a- and every time I was met with opposition. And so, I didn't, you know, at this point, it's, I, I've given it enough time to try to, to, to resolve and, um, nobody would communicate with me. So, I, I, I don't know what else to do, I mean, anyway.
I will try to find compromise to the bitter end, so, um, I, I just wanted to ask.
Sure.
Anything else?
Can I clarify, I, I want to make sure I heard correctly. Um, right now, right now for you, the compromise of R3 or planned development is off of the table. That's where you stand right now?
Today, yes, ma'am. I, I've, I've, I've tried that numerous, numerous times and, and was, was opposed, it was shot down. And so, at this point, I, what am I supposed to do? I've, I've thrown it out there and it was shot back to me. And so, you know, what, what point do you say, I'm not gonna throw it out there anymore? I mean, that's just, I mean, I was said absolutely not, or it's just not the way it is. And so, um, you know, why would I throw it out there again to be opposed?
Um, I don't know if that's a rhetorical question, but I'm gonna assume that it's not. Um, because there are different circumstances now, right? I mean, whereas before, I don't know who you were negotiating with or who was speaking for whom, we are at a city council level issue where it wouldn't be, the compromise wouldn't be you trying to do something and getting shot down. It would, the idea, I think, would be that it would actually bear fruit. And so, that's, that's, I mean, I think that the circumstances are different now. I'm ju- I'm just asking to clarify, I'm not trying to push you one way or the other. I just, it would be good for me to know, I think all of us, really be clear on, on your position right now.
As I stand here today, I, I believe it like it is.
Okay, and then you would also be unwilling to go through the process again? Is that what I heard you?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, but, and let me elaborate a little bit more on hers. And, and again, I'm, I'm not trying to convince you, I'm just trying to, trying to find that compa- path to compromise.
Sure, sure.
And, a- and what, what I could see i- is if there was a way to place this on hold and then put you back with the city to work on planned development, we, we get a, a, a plan of e- of exactly what you're gonna do o- on the property duplex-wise and, and we could give some assurances to the neighborhood and, and assurances to you that you could accomplish what you wanted to accomplish? Are you telling me that, that you, you're not willing to do that?
I, I would definitely sit down with anybody to talk about it. I've, I've said that since day one, since I knew there was an issue. Um, the, I mean, the, the issue is that no matter which way I turn, I'm gonna fight with opposition. That's what I feel like, I've been pushed into a corner and nobody's really wanted to talk to me. They've wanted to, 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 to bash me or whatever that may be. But at the same time, I'm just trying to do one simple thing and I'm not trying to hurt the neighborhood or anything else. A- and I, I've said that numerous times to many of you, that I'm willing to talk. At some point, you have to say, look, nobody wants to talk to me, nobody wants to go, so what's different now? I guess is my question, is why, why now would somebody, you know, be interested in talking to me? And, and my other question is, you know, if I do go through plan, plan development, I'm gonna get the same opposition. I mean, we, we all know that for the, the two or three processes that it goes through a planned development, i- it's not gonna be any different. That's what I'm saying, I just feel like I'm backed into a corner.
Yeah, but I think in the end, the council will deci- will, will decide. And so, I think one-
But we'll just have another presentation like this.
Yeah, we, we will. But one thing that I struggle with is I can't, I don't know exactly what's going to be there and, and I can't explain that to people. I think if I could see it and I could explain to people, I could leave some of these, some of the fears, uh, that exist. And so, I do think that that's different. So, anyway, I, I just wanted to express that to you and, and, uh, it, yes?
I've got another clarifier then. Um, i- it sounds like from what you were just saying that your concern with coming back to the compromise table is that you're still gonna get opposition. Is that your main concern?
Without question.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, without question.
So, in a hypothetical world?
I'll live in, I'll live, let's go ahead.
Okay, let's go, let's go there. If we were to say, here is R3, or here is planned development, you're not gonna get opposition? Would you, would that be, okay, so your main concern is opposition from the, from the neighborhood?
Most definitely, yes. I don't care anything about the R4. I don't, it's not that, it's just, I, I wanna be able to build what I want a- and which, which, which is, you know, and within reason. And, and however that gets there, that's not, that's not, that's, that's not what I care about, to be honest with you. It's, I'm not trying to just hold firm on R4 and it's just, 'cause I wanna build apartments, so it's, it's not the, the intention.
I don't think, I mean, I'm only gonna speak for myself. I don't think that that's, you know, I don't think that you're lying about what you wanna do on the property, but since zoning runs with the land.
I understand.
That's, that's the only thing.
And I've tried to give sixteen months to, you know, it's not like I, I started construction the day after. I've, I've tried, the, the delay was for a reason.
Right.
A- and so, I just try to be compassionate to the neighbors, to try to talk, let's make sure everybody's on the same page, and all I've got is opposition. I mean, do you understand where I'm coming from? I, I, it's not like I'm an enemy, I'm trying to do something crazy. That, that's the whole, i- i- it's... I- it's, it's been disheartening, to say the least, because ultimately, anyway.
Um, I, if I may, sort of as a follow-up to her question, is there anyone here who could even act as a representative of the people in opposition? Um, to, to sort of at least make a verbal assurance that if a compromise is found, that, um, that there would be no opposition?
I, I think where I'd kinda like to go from here is to finish up with Mr. Bohack and then offer public comment, if that's, if that, that would make some sense.
I think we need to.
Yeah, yeah. Is, does anyone else have a comment for Mr. Bohack? And the same, we'd like to reserve the right to ask you to come back and, and talk to us, but-
I'll be here.
Yeah, if you'll, you have, have a seat and, and we'll, we'll move on through the meeting. Um, so, i- i- I do think this is a time that we would like to have public comment ideas on certainly your thoughts, but also on what you've heard us, us discuss tonight. So, a- an- anyone? Yes, Ms., uh-huh, yes? I'm sorry, Ms. Shin, I'm, I'm sorry.
Are you not asking me to come?
I was asking Ms. Shin to come and then you'll-
I just wanted to come and you wanna remark that Mr. Bohack made-
S- certainly, but let, let me-
I will let her come.
Sure, and you'll be next.
I don't want to miss information.
Sure, sure, just give me it, just-
See, I, I can walk this far, shh.
You're kinda slow-moving and you cause confusion.
I am, in my age, I am slow-moving. I'll remember to tell you my name tonight, I'm Betty Shin. And it concerns me that we're following a comprehensive plan that was written a few years ago and we're going against it, and that's what we're trying to do publicly, is build another plan. I'll move off the plan. My concern is that Logan's Port Street is a beautiful street and it's an R2 street. The neighborhood is, it's a part of the historic plat- uh, overlay, of which my church is a part of that. And we respect that. I was concerned when the council voted months ago to change from R2 to R4. It made me walk around my single-dwelling neighborhood and look at the empty plots. One phase is a major street in town and I'm thinking, now, what if they changed that to an R4 and I have an apartment building built next to my home? Or around the corner from my home. So, I'm really opposed to your spot zoning, period, without substantial reasons. Especially for a street that's very narrow, that would cost the taxpayers a lot of money. It's a beautiful entrance to Pecan Park, that we don't wanna destroy that. And as I drove down Logan's Port Street and saw the beautiful historic homes, I don't think those, that neighborhood would want apartments built there. Just like I don't want apartments built in the single-dwelling neighborhood that my husband and I chose to live in. Thank you for my here.
Thank you. Ms., Ms. Costello?
Okay, it's your turn, you gotta walk all the way up.
I know, I get it, okay.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Shin, I didn't ask you to state your name, Ms. Costello, would you please?
Okay, uh, I am Pam Costello, I live at ten oh nine Logan's Port Street. But before I give what I wanted to give, I wanted to refute a few of Mr. Bohack's comments. Under open records, I have access to a document that stated in June, the reason for R4 was in case he wanted to build more duplexes to go along. And I have all of this and it's all a matter of public record. Philip Blackburn, right after this happened, approached Mr. Bohack and said, "I will buy the property and get you out of this situation." Mr. Bohack asked for five hundred thousand dollars. This is a fact, I am not making this up. So, yes, we did contact him and yes, we did try to get ahold of him. No, we were not compromising, but we were trying to save him from what he feels is whatever. Okay, so, that's, um, that's a fact, just in response to Mr. Bohack. Eleven oh two Logan's Port was zoned R2. A realtor, also the head of planning and zoning, purchased the property. It was never advertised for sale and was never, ever street signed for zone, rezoning. The, truthfully, I might have bought the property and changed my house to that house because it's a smaller house and I, you know, mine's very big. When the Sentinel published the story, that was the first time anyone knew anything about this. Because people don't pay attention to zoning. The two-hundred-foot of butters, only five were residents of this street. And yes, I'm one of them and yes, I'm at fault. I wasn't there, I didn't get my letter till after everything was done because I was away. Unfortunately, there's another problem there. When a two-hundred-foot of butter letter is sent out in most cities, it is stated the twenty percent rule applies. The twenty percent rule is that if more than twenty percent of the people that receive this letter are in opposition, it changes the voting structure. I do not believe, I know for a fact, the letters did not con- contain this. I don't even know if council and zoning knew this. So, I, again, that's, that's an error, an error. Um, of the sixteen of butters, only five live on the street. Okay. But he asked for R4 multifamily. In February, the city advised him that R3 was the proper zoning. And I just explained to you about the letter that I saw written where the reason he was told R4 in June, so he could build more duplexes, he could build even more properties in the future on that land. Multifamily is very broad. As I just told you, we offered to buy the property. He asked for five hundred thousand dollars. Zoning runs with the land, we all know it's where profit is made. It's made by developers, they purchase property secretly, they get them rezoned. I could give you a million examples. They make the profit, they don't care about the neighborhood or the residents. They care about the profit they will make and then they leave. The neighborhood's left, you know, however it is. They destroy the neighborhood, they walk away. Be careful when developers tell you what they're going to build. Until a hi- a plan is, is, is in final, it can be changed. Furthermore, it can be sold. R4 can be sold to deep-pocket people that can do lots of things. So, we can say, oh, you can only do this or you can only do that, not true. R4 can be sold and many different things can do there. Neighborhood sent a petition, nobody listened. Then, nobody knew even this was happening until the Sentinel published it and by then, the deed was done. Hundreds of people called and contacted the city, no response. We have a page called Save Logan's Port Street, three hundred people, no response. Logan's Port Street is a microcosm of a larger problem, rubber stamping zoning. Rubber stamping zoning request with no concern for the residents, putting profit ahead of citizens. As one sweet lady said to me, and was at a luncheon, if they can do this to our beloved Logan's Port Street, no neighborhood is safe. Now, from the Pine Log. Logan's Port Street is an isolated street located behind Pecan Park. It is one of the last historic streets in Nacogdoches, has not been altered by high-density developments. We are not fighting against growth, we are begging for the preservation of this historic street. Historic preservation. Maintain the integrity and character of historic districts and neighborhoods, which provide a sense of identity and community to a neighborhood. Logan's Port is a beloved street. Read some of the comments that are on Save Logan's Port Street. History of the area, from King Street to Pecan Park. This was at one time a very important part of the black history of Nacogdoches. Eleven oh two Logan's Port was originally owned by the Walton family, a prominent back pa- black family who in eighteen seventy-nine donated the land that is now Zion Hill Baptist Church. Before that, there had been what was called a Brush Arbor Church on Logan's Port Street. And this is interesting, I talked to the Waltons. The only reason they sold that particular piece of property is because the city taxed them to build a road and therefore, they had to release that part of their family land to be able to- to be able to pay for it. Why must we destroy our precious Logan's Port Street, beloved by all Nacogdoches, so that one person can set a precedent for destruction of the area? And believe me, that's what it will be. You will have this on this side, this on this side, that one that side. It's the end of an era, it's an end of historic area, it's the end of a street loved by many. I live at 1009 Logan's Port Street. I don't want to have to use my standing to take this any further. This was done when our city council had many, many more serious, serious things going. A mistake was made. It needs to be sent back. Logan's Port Street has a wonderful ambiance. We walk, we bicycle, we run, we push strollers. I guess my main concern is, it's really uncomfortable, because I moved to Nacogdoches, I was told almost to fly here by my son when he found a house on Logan's Port Street to buy, and I did. And told me how much everybody loved Logan's Port Street, loved the history of Logan's Port Street, loved the fact that all of the things that go on the entrance. And yes, we talk about compromise. Why are we asked to compromise, Your Honor? Why are we asked to compromise the neighbors, the people that have lived here for all these years, who love the street, who work hard to keep it the way it is, who love to wheel their babies down in strollers, who ride their bicycles, who push their grandmothers? Why should we be asked to compromise? For someone that came out of nowhere, purchased a house that was never put on the market for sale, rezoned a property, and followed methods that were not ethical, they were not only not ethical, in some ways, they violated ordinances? And, no, you're right, there isn't compromise for this. There is a nice house that Mr. Bohack owns. He gets a rental from that every month. He's not going to lose money. But if he builds, whatever he builds, and it changes every week, townhomes, duplexes, but none of that matters, you see, until the plat is put there. None of that matters. He can sell it tomorrow, I guess for $500,000, I don't happen to have that much. But that's what happens when you do zoning badly. And this was a badly, badly done rezoning. And we are asking the city, all of you, to do what the citizens want, not what one person wants to make a profit. So it's, and yes, there is no compromise.
Thank you, Ms. Costello. Ms. Walker? I'm sorry, I saw you looking kind of stiff. Will you state your name, please?
My name is Diana Walker, and I have a statement to read, but before I do, I want to say something personally. We moved here 48 years ago and have lived in the same house on Reggae Street for 48 years. And when we moved here, that was a reputable neighborhood. But over the years, people have bought those houses and turned them into rent houses for college students. Okay, we have eight duplexes, that's two people per duplex, that's 16 cars. How can you guarantee that it's only going to be two people? And this is my point. A person bought the house next to me, it's been a residential house for 48 years, turned it into a rent house, and there were eight college students living there. We never saw them. There were eight cars, always parked in the street where it says "No Parking." I turned them into the city because of all the trash that they had collected on the street that they would not put in the garbage can, and they moved out in the night the next week. Makes you wonder what they were doing. So please take that into consideration. You know, even though there might be four college students that want to live together, or six, that's what they do, and every one of them has a car. Okay. My name is Diana Walker. I have been involved with downtown revitalization for decades. I was a member who worked on the master plan in 2003, and I worked on the one previously, and I worked on the one previous to that. So that was '76, how many? And I spent many, many, many long hours with a lot of members in this community to put that comprehensive plan together. I mean, endless hours. And one of our main goals was to keep our historic districts intact. And if you look at the map of the future land plans, it includes a map of Logan's Port, and it was meant to keep it intact as a residential historic neighborhood. Since this was a suggestion of the master plan back then, why would you change it now? Tourists come to Nacogdoches for two reasons. One, our heritage, and two, our gardens. We are the garden capital of Texas. If we lose both, we lose our tourism tax dollars and our sales tax. I started the Nine Flags Christmas Festival around 1995, mainly because people were unaware of why nine flags flew over Nacogdoches. We honored all nine flags, including the Native Americans. And we brought in the Caddo Indians from Oklahoma and the Alabama Kishaw Indians from Livingston. Thousands of people came and learned about their heritage. Davy Crockett, how many of you know Davy Crockett took his oath to the allegiance of Texas here in Nacogdoches? Do y'all know that? Do y'all know where Sam Houston's first office was?
Nacogdoches.
Yes, but do you know where it was? Right here, in this very spot. I had the privilege of hearing the mayor of Savannah, Georgia, speak in Austin at a Texas Historical Commission meeting, and this is what he told the crowd. "Nacogdoches, Texas is the Savannah, Georgia of Texas." And that's a pretty big statement, coming from the mayor of Savannah, Georgia. That's how important our history is. And why do we have it, how, why do people come here? They come to see our old homes, to come see our historic sites. Okay. So allowing these apartments to be built, I feel, will send a message to our citizens and tourists who visit, that you're not interested in preserving our historic areas. So as a representative of our community, let's preserve our heritage by voting to keep our historic neighborhoods intact. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Walker. Good sir, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. I'm Ron Johnson. My wife and I live within the 200-foot circle of this particular property. Sitting here at night, listening to all this, why would you be on a board that knows what the comprehensive plan is, and then go buy a property that is zoned one way, and then try to get it rezoned another way? If it's within the plan? I mean, that doesn't make sense to me to begin with. You go buy, "Well, I'll buy it and I'll change the zoning." I mean, it's already laid out as to what it's supposed to be there, and all of a sudden now we're going, you know, we got one person that says they can change it. When I first got my notice, the first thing I did was call Mr. Bohack, and I said, "I'm within 200 feet, what are you planning to do?" He says, "Well, I'm using the existing house to rent to people that may be building a house and need a temporary place to stay, and I'm also considering a couple of duplexes, if I keep the existing house." Okay? So now, all that's been changing, I've seen some proposed plans of four duplexes, five duplexes, and four triplexes. So when I did a little research, and I think the average number of people per household in Texas is 3.6, so if you build four duplexes, that's 28 people. Five duplexes is 36, four triplexes is 43. Everybody has a car. You've got, so how many vehicles is that going to be? 30, 40? More? If we get a bunch of, a bunch of people in one of the units, does that mean 50 cars on a street that's very narrow and needs to be redone? How about Wood Street? That's the other street that runs into it. And I spoke with the, you know, with our planning person, Elena, and I said, "Have you driven down Wood Street since you moved here, and do you realize that it's a one-lane street?" So to me, if we're going to do something on there, we need to have access, I think we saw that in your slide, we need access. So we have two narrow streets, leading to potentially 43 people with 30, 40 cars. I mean, I don't see how it works. So, we brought up about, you know, the charm of the street, and what it's all about. And down at the end, we're going to have, you know, something totally out of place. And, you know, it just doesn't smell good to me, the whole deal. I mean, we keep changing the thing, we don't know what we're going to have there. So, we're going to have this brand-new property on a historic street, and I thought we were the oldest town in Texas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Mr. Smith, I'm sorry.
I am Sammy Smith, and I think most of the people on the city council and Mr. Mayor, you know who I am. I've lived in Nacogdoches for 41 years. I'm not a native of Nacogdoches, but to use a cliche, I got here as fast as I could. But I am a native Texan, fifth generation, go all the way back to the Revolutionary War with Mexico, my ancestors. So I understand a little bit about Texas history. Also understand a little bit about college towns. I have been living in college towns, I think there are a total of five of them maybe, for the last 61 years. And I understand real estate problems in college towns. Also grew up in the DFW area, so I understand development and what it does. Sometimes it's not real progressive. When I first read about what happened last year, when the city council did that zoning change, I was absolutely appalled. I could not believe the process. And as I dug into it, not nearly as much as Councilwoman Bellinger has, I was further appalled. I sat down and wrote an email, a long one, to every member of the city council and the mayor, and my conclusion was, and this may not really come out right, but I concluded with one sentence, I said, "The whole process did not pass the smell test. You guys on the city council now have the ability to correct a wrong, and I would encourage you to do so." I am very impressed with what the report that Councilwoman Bellinger gave, and I would like to get an attorney's opinion on the legalities of what happens if you guys do not correct the wrong, because she gave a really good argument for some civil action cases. The city attorney's looking at me. That's a very expensive process. I just went through one with a neighbor violating a deed restriction, trying to keep my neighborhood, and I am not anywhere near located to Logan's Port. I live way out by the high school in Noelwood. But I know what happens to neighborhoods, or can happen to neighborhoods, in college towns. I'm going to offer you a little bit of a suggestion. People are talking about compromise. I was, again, kind of appalled while ago when somebody said that the city had agreed to bring that street up to code, if he went in and did that. To bring that street up to code, we're talking about repaving, curbs, gutters? The city's going to spend more money than Bohack spent for the lot to start with. So I got a suggestion. Rather than go through that expensive process, why don't we use eminent domain? Pay Bohack off for the lot, city take deed to it, maybe the same thing for the next four and a half acres, and turn it into addition to Pecan Park. Bohack would come out zero. I can't understand why he wouldn't compromise to that, because he's going to go through some real fight if you guys don't correct this problem. I appreciate you listening to me, and I hope this is over.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Martinez?
Afternoon, evening? How are you? Mr. Mayor, council members? My name is Zeke Martinez. I live in the corner, my wife and I, Nancy, who's present, we've lived in the corner of King and Logan's Port Streets, right there, in the middle of what is the hottest spot for traffic in Nacogdoches. It is a super-heavy-duty-used street. And I don't exaggerate, I can provide visual, if you want it, if you want to see it, how busy it is. And some of you may understand that, have seen it. It doesn't seem that way, but there are literally hundreds of cars go by there every single day. It's incredible, the amount of traffic. We bought that property and have kept it basically the same, as far as the structure itself. In 1986, it was a rundown duplex. The best I can find out, including from former mayor, Stripling, told me that he remembered that house being built back in 1920s. And sure enough, I found some documents, some writings and so forth, that go back to the 1924, I believe, was the earliest that I could document that that house was built. So, in any case, I managed to keep it the way I bought it, just basically fixed it up and lived in. We were privileged to have been able to raise our children there. Excellent place to raise a family. There have been numerous, through the years, numerous accidents. Every single house on that particular corner, in that intersection, with one exception, has had a vehicle come up on the yard, every one of them, through the years that we've lived there. Twice on our place, all the way up close to the house, literally within 10 feet. So I can only imagine what would go through, as far as how much more traffic is going to be until, to come into that small area. Further, you are asking the emergency vehicles if there is a need for one. I know, because that was my business for 40 years. I happen to have made several calls down in that area, trying to get an ambulance down there. Yes, you can go one way, but it literally is one way. If you have to turn around, which we did, you have to go down to the park, and there's a dirt circle that turns around. Problem with that is, if you have multiple vehicles, which you normally do in the city, you have a lot of time spent just trying to get out of there in an emergency. The streets, Wood Street and that small area over from Martinsville down to the park, it is, it's a one-way street, is the way. I mean, there's just no way to pass. But beyond all that, I want to thank Councilmember Bellinger, the excellent presentation you just did. Why would you not, as the gentleman just said, right a wrong? The city, or whoever, however it happened, it's obviously not right. It's beyond the city ordinances, all the presentation showed. Are you going to break those ordinances by voting to go ahead and leave it the way it is? I don't see how that happens. So, from my point of view, it's just not feasible for the city to spend more money for somebody else to make a profit. That may be, as somebody put it, "Well, I'm not going to treat people that way." As far as somebody making money off of it, that's... As far as, as somebody making money off of it, that's, we, we can't. The way it was put to me was that we can't dictate how a man makes a living. And that's very true, you can't. But you shouldn't ask the taxpayers to, to foot the bill for that man making money. And with that, I'll leave it alone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If I could, I would just like to clarify that I did not put together that PowerPoint.
You presented it very well.
Well, thank you. I was just the spokesperson for the people who did.
Anyone, yes. Can you, you have to, could you come forward, please?
This was not part of my plan. My name is Nancy Collins. I wanted to speak, I don't live on Logan's Port. However, I walked up and down the street for twenty-six years as a mailman. So it's deep in my heart. And my question is, do you all have the power to vote to put this back to where it was supposed to be? That's all I wanna know. Or we're only here today for you to do this vote? Is that a yes?
We have the power.
The, the way it would work is that we would remand it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then it would go, and it would, suggesting that the, that the city manager request a change from R4 to R2, P&amp;Z would act, and then it would come back to us for approval, is what I understand, is that right?
You would direct the staff to prepare an applica, to prepare the process, an application to rezone the property from its current R4 to R2. Staff would prepare that, it would then go to zoning commission, and then zoning commission to you.
We do have the power. Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Mclemore.
My name is Baron Mclemore. I'm here on the opposition to, the opposition about this. I wanted to speak in Mr. Bohack's favor and for Nacogdoches' favor and for business' favor and for development' favor and for the previous commission's favor. Mr. Bohack, I was involved, I don't know if many people know it, I developed, me and my dad developed Austin Hill subdivision. My dad also built the Austin Street Church of Christ. During this time, my dad passed away three years ago, I had to come up with something to do, didn't know what I could do with the church, didn't even know if it could be sold or whatever. But during this time, I was approached by the Senior Citizens Center of Nacogdoches about purchasing the church building for the Senior Citizens Center to move there. So that is part, was part of a planned development. So I had to go through this process, y'all were wanting to send Mr. Bohack through again. And it just so happened that my planned development meetings, or the meetings with Planning and Zoning and City Commission, fell pretty much at the same, a lot of the Planning and Zoning meetings fell at the same time about what Mr. Bohack was doing. Talk about favoritism. You know, how, how sad is it that somebody that comes to Nacogdoches and volunteers for a board, and he never said anything? I listened to his stuff. You know, what you're saying is, hey, if you're on a board, you can't do anything positive for Nacogdoches if it benefits you? I mean, he recused himself from every discussion there was on those meetings for Planning and Zoning. Yes, he was head of Planning and Zoning, but he chose to be there. I mean, he believed, I've developed a business relationship with him. And he believes in Nacogdoches and believes what he was doing was the best for that piece of property that has had nothing done with it. We talk about the historic aspects or the prettiness aspects of Logan's Port. I was pretty much blown away when I finally figured out where Logan's Port was. There's a, a luminal trailer house parked in the right-of-way that's been there since I moved over from San Augustine in nineteen eighty-one. And I chose to get to Nacogdoches as soon as I could. That was the night I graduated. I had my truck packed and moved to Nacogdoches. So in favor of the previous city, city people, listening to this and seeing the process and going through some of the similar processes, I do not believe Jeff Davis, Alana, Steve Bartlet, or anybody did anything wrong, unethical, or illegal, or showing favoritism. They all advised him to do what they thought was best, for that was a piece of property. The previous council, which there was three, three of y'all that were still on that, I commend you for having the forethought to say, "This is what we think would be a good thing for this street." We had a two-hundred-foot rule that, you know, if people wanted something, whenever I did something or do anything in town, changing any zoning or whatever, there was a rule that people have to be notified. Everybody had that same, had the same opportunity to come and speak at any of those meetings that were held at that time. COVID, the mail still ran. People still got their stuff. Cities still had meetings. I was, watched those, Planning and Zoning still had meetings. I didn't have a clue what Zoom was before all this. Found it out, you know? Luckily, I was able to, not being technologically advanced, I was able to figure it out for the city, which then rotated when churches stopped having meetings. I was able to still attend and view church with Zoom. Everybody had their chance to speak on this. Everything was done. Mr. Bohack, I've been there and listened to the people talk behind his back, talk about him, say this or that. The street, one of the people that has spoke tonight has three rent properties on that same street, yet they say they care about the street. Well, they haven't turned it back into single-family housing and sold it to other people. They're still using it for their, their benefit. This is for his benefit. I mean, I've wrote so many things down here. They, they're asking you to, to, to fix this wrong. I do not believe the people that were involved and are still employed here or still elected officials here did anything wrong. So two wrongs don't make a right. Some people may believe it was wrong, but it was done legally, ethically, morally, and good for Nacogdoches, is my opinion. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Good evening, council. My name is George Barm. I'm a local broker of real estate and builder in this community. Last year, I had a property that was rezoned. And so I just wanna know, if you got the ability to pick and choose and come back sixteen months later, you know, what assurances is there that the property that I've had rezoned doesn't come get, excuse me, revisited? There's been mistakes that this city has made before. And we can sit here all night and we can outline them, we can do right-hand versus left-hand. The brewery was a huge mistake, okay? I love the brewery. I know the guys that are involved, and it's an amazing place. But the way that they sold it to the city and how it's becoming a huge issue with parking and those kind of things, we can go on all night about wrongs and bringing stuff up. So my question to the city council is, is bringing up previously already-voted-on zoning for developers, because we already know what stigma this city has about developing. We can go about historic stuff, our family's been here since the eighteen seventies. And we saw what happened in North Street, we can go on about history all we want to. But the fact is, a decision was made, and it needs to be honored. It needs to be honored because the process went through, the notification was made, the people didn't show up. And so I don't want it to be a precedent i- if it is that I'm the one to develop in the city, and I've gotta look over my shoulder if, oh my gosh, this is gonna happen to me and others. And I'd also like to go have it on record of two of the city council members that do live on that street, on Logan's Port Street. Is that a fact? Is that true? Okay. I just want that to be on record as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Barm. Yes, sir.
David Connolly, and I just want to suggest what might be a reasonable compromise, and that would be to allow Mr. Bohack to divide the property and create an additional two or three R1, R2 properties out of it. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Yes, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, council persons, appreciate the opportunity to come tonight. I'm Ron Collins. I live at eighteen twenty-seven York Drive. I've appreciated a lot of the points of view tonight, certainly some good ones. And first of all, I would say that I really appreciate Logan's Port Street. It's very historic. It has many beautiful homes, and I appreciate that area very much. But I understand Mr. Bohack has managed the respective properties or the zoning requests as allowed by the city. P&amp;Z has approved it. City Council has approved it. Everyone has approved it. And I encourage a compromise be sought with Mr. Bohack. But unless a compromise can be reached with him to his satisfaction, I would encourage you to stand firm in honoring the decision that has made, been made in this regard. It is necessary to protect the integrity of our zoning process, to do anything else would set a terrible precedent for our city and its processes. We need to trust our property owner and developer, who is a long-term honorable citizen and businessman in Nacogdoches, to use his good judgment and make the improvements in a way that he plans to do and that be satisfactory to all. Now hopefully that will happen. But again, I think that, I think that if we, if we change what we're doing now, it does set a terrible precedent for us to look at other pieces, just like Mr. Barm had said in regard to, you know, anyone's zone could be challenged and changed after investments were made. And I don't think that sets the right course for us in this city. So again, I appreciate those that live on that street. It's a beautiful street. My wife and I drive down it every once in a while. In fact, we own property that is very near, you know, there. And we have various rental properties that we manage over there and have good tenants and enjoy being a part of that community. So in any way, I appreciate the time to visit with you. And I encourage you to, like I said, stand firm unless a compromise can be reached with him to his satisfaction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Yes, sir, Mr. Blackburn.
Yes, I'm Philip Blackburn, and I wanted to clear up a few of the misconceptions here. I have a few. RJ mentioned that he extended an olive branch to the neighborhood and was rejected. But actually, I think what happened was I extended an olive branch to RJ and offered to buy the property. And a similar thing had happened in our neighborhood a number of years ago. There was a piece of property around the corner between Martinsville and Texas Street. And there was gonna be a HUD development built on that. And we didn't think that was very good for the neighborhood either, many units. And the neighborhood went in together and purchased that property. And we held that property for probably fifteen years and just recently sold it a couple of years ago. But before we sold it, we put deed restrictions in it so that it could only be divided in half. And I think there can only be two houses, single-family residential houses built on it. So we were able to solve that. And I thought, well, maybe we could do something similar at the end of the street. I felt bad that this had happened. And I felt the best thing to do would be to compensate Mr. Bohack for the money he had in the project and let him just walk away and go do a development somewhere else. I thought that was a good compromise. And so when I approached RJ about it, I asked him how much he wanted for it. And he said, "Well, let me think about it." And so I did some research on my own. I know there was a lien at your bank, Jimmy. And I was able to figure out, well, based on the loan, I was thinking he had somewhere around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that property, plus or minus. And when I asked RJ how much he wanted for it, he came back and said he wanted half a million dollars for it. So this, you talk about extending an olive branch and having it rejected. I think that's an example of extending an olive branch and having it rejected. It kinda put things off on the, on the, on the wrong foot. Now what I wanted to bring up is something I just found out about yesterday. We've had comments from people saying, "Oh, everything was done by the letter of the law." Well, when I was preparing this PowerPoint, I read over the Section 171 of the Texas Local Government Code, and I've got it there for you. And right there at the beginning, "If a local public official has a substantial interest in a business entity or in real property, the official shall file," and this is important here, "before a vote or decision on any matter involving the business entity or the real property, an affidavit stating the nature and extent of the interest and shall abstain from further participation in the matter if," and the subclause here that applies, "in the case of a substantial interest in real property, it is reasonably foreseeable that an action on the matter will have a special economic effect on the value of the property distinguishable from its effect on the public." Okay, well, I did an open records request back September of last year and got a ton of documents. And when I was preparing this PowerPoint, I said, "You know, I don't remember seeing that affidavit." And so I called Judge Kirkland yesterday, and I said, "Is there an affidavit for that?" "Oh, yes, there's an affidavit. It's in the city secretary's office." "Well, I'd like to get a copy of it." Well, when I got a copy of it, I realized why I hadn't gotten it in the open records request. You can see it's dated September fourteenth, okay? Which is like a month after they approved the rezon. This was supposed to have been filed before they took the vote. The vote in Planning and Zoning was back in August the tenth, okay? So there were, this is just another example of the mountain of things that were not done by the letter of the law, whether it's our city ordinances. This is state law. I guess if you're gonna disregard state law, well, then the city ordinance doesn't really matter. This is Class A misdemeanor stuff. This can get you fines and/or jail time, is what we're talking about. So the idea that this was done by the letter of the law is kind of a joke. Okay, we get over to, what does it mean to recuse yourself? We've heard a lot of talk about, oh, he recused himself and didn't participate in it. Well, you know, this affidavit is calling for you to abstain from anything to do it. That, to me, that means you don't have anything to do with it. And I think the city planner had mentioned that, in her experience in previous cities, when someone on the Planning and Zoning Commission owned property that they wanted to get rezoned, they had someone represent them in that. They didn't have anything to do with it. Well, what happened in this case? Well, there's, he worked with the city staff. I think that's irregular. You know, it's kinda like putting your thumb on the scale. He should have had a representative do that. He spoke with one of the two-hundred-foot butters. You know, to me, that's kinda like tampering with a jury. That's someone who has standing to contest the zone change. Someone within two-hundred-foot. I didn't get the two-hundred-foot letter. But someone who did get the two-hundred-foot letter, he's talking to them and giving them incomplete information. The plan was never to build a couple of duplexes. And that's what he told one of the guys within two-hundred feet. I think that's participating in the process. Whenever the Planning and Zoning had their meeting, this was not a real meeting that you could go to, okay? This was a Zoom meeting. And during the Zoom meeting, yes, he recused himself, he did not vote. But the city planner said, "He's here available for questions." That's participating in the process. At one point, when she called for the vote, he chuckled, and it was loud enough, I guess on the Zoom meeting, that it triggered the camera to go to his feed. And there he is, okay? At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, participating in the process. That's irregular. Then, after the Planning and Zoning, when it goes over to the city council, he's at the city council meeting. Now, was he there as the applicant? Was he there as the chair of the Planning and Zoning? Well, he's both. He shouldn't have been anywhere near that place. That's participating in the process, putting your thumb on the scale. And while he was there, he gave that information. That's why he's not supposed to be there. He's not supposed to be influencing the decision-making. I think what has happened in this case is it's made a mockery of our city council ordinances, just disregarding the stuff that, and whenever there's talk about, "Oh, I don't wanna go through the process again because I'm gonna be met with opposition." Well, I think you now know why things were done the way they were in the first place. This is the reason why things were skirted, things were ignored, things were disregarded, and the reason why he was going for R4. He doesn't wanna go to the Board of Adjustments to get. He doesn't want to go to the Board of Adjustments to get some zoning variances on that because the lot is only 80 feet deep. He's going to need variances to do what he wants to do. So this was all part of the plan to just ramrod the thing through the system. You know, if you were going to write a book about how not to do rezoning, this is a textbook case. And so in my opinion, with all the things that are just stacking, what choice do you have to not rezone this back to R2? If you let this stand, this is a disgrace. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Blackburn. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Excuse my cheat sheet. My name's Maggie Forbes. I live at 607 Burke Street. So obviously, I don't live anywhere near Logan's Port. I didn't get a notice or anything. I didn't know this was happening until it was over. But I have to tell you, many, many times I have driven across town and met a friend, maybe at the cemetery somewhere near Logan's Port, and we have walked down that street to Pecan Park because it's a beautiful place and it's peaceful. And when you get there, you're at the park, you know? And I don't think I'm the only one that feels this way. I was at a medical office. I saw a lovely watercolor. I went up and looked at it. And it was called Entrance to Pecan Park. And it was a painting of Logan's Port coming out of Pecan Park. And I don't think, if this zoning goes through, you're not going to see any more paintings like that. My point is that Logan's Port belongs to all of us, not just the people 200 feet from there, but everybody, the male lady, everybody that's gone, driven across town to take a walk down Logan's Port. And what happened isn't right for many, many reasons. But you have a chance to fix it. So I really, really hope that you do fix it. And like some other people said, you know, Logan's Port's got everything. It's got important architecture. It's got trees. It's a big, wide street. It ends at Pecan Park. So if you can do R4 zoning right at the entrance to Pecan Park, nothing in Nacogdoches is sacred. And all you have to do, all we all have to do, is make good decisions to keep our town beautiful. So all you have to do is make a decision that is consistent with our very own comprehensive plan. And I know you know this, but I'm just going to read it. This is the mission statement. "Nacogdoches, the oldest town in Texas, appreciates and protects its historical, natural, and cultural character, promotes a healthy living environment, and enjoys future growth and prosperity." We could certainly have future growth with that R1 zoning. And there should be no compromise. You can't compromise away our opposition to this. It's R1. It's supposed to be R1, and it should stay R1. So, thank you. And thank you very much for that presentation and for having the hearing.
Thank you. Yes. Hello?
My name is Suzie Lauer, and I don't live in the city anymore, but I did for a long time. Some of you may remember I was the director of Millard's Crossing for about 24 years. So Diana Walker was right when she says people come to Nacogdoches for the history. They really do. We may think it's a little passe, but it's not. And if you approach it right, it does attract people. I think Charles Bright's statues were just, you know, a marvelous touch, you know, to remind people of the history here. But anyway, I've learned a lot from this whole thing. And I keep going back and forth. I'm a Libra. It's, well, that's a good point. Well, yeah, I like his point. Kathleen, you did a beautiful presentation. But I went to the mission statement of the Planning and... Planning and... Yeah, Planning and Zoning Board. Thank you. And what it says is, "The mission of the Planning Department is to provide for a choice of land uses while protecting owners against the adverse effects of others' actions and to achieve economic prosperity while creating a more desirable community for all to live." Whoa, it's a little of this and a little of that. So it takes a lot of wisdom to be able to keep this balance. I think the problem here is the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think they need to be, to look at what they're doing a little more carefully, make sure they don't have conflict of interest, people on the board that have a strong conflict of interest. And that's why I'm here, actually. I thought, man, that is just a conflict of interest. It really is. So I think if we return to the mission statement, if we look at the Planning and Zoning Board and make sure that they do what they're supposed to do and do it carefully and judiciously, we won't run into these problems. I can appreciate what Ron said about if you change this, you know, you might just pull out the rug from under all these developers. They don't know what to count on and everything. I understand that point of view. But I think in this case, this is something where you really need to reconsider the whole thing, correct that, and then make sure it doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, we will...
Can I make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to adopt the resolution as stated. And that resolution is directing the city staff to file an application under Code of Ordinance 118-137C. Do I need to read the whole thing or can...? Okay. I move to adopt the resolution as stated.
For the second.
We're going to have discussion?
Yeah.
I wanted to have council. I wanted to have discussion after hearing public comment.
Once, we'll need to have the motion seconded before we can have discussion. I think, is that, am I correct?
I'll second.
All right, discussion? Ms. Fisher?
Yes, sir. Before I start in the actual issue, I wanted to address the implication that there is some level of inappropriateness by the fact that two people who are on city council live on Logan Sports Street. Just to set the record straight, we have consulted with, and I have on my own, multiple legal counsel about conflict of interest, about whether there's any sort of gain on our end, and there is not. And so I think the implication that we would vote in any way other than what our constituency or community asks for is incorrect. Okay. I think... The way that I think about this is even more than, sorry, even more than the ultimate result of what will be built at the end of the street. My concern is the way in which the entire process was done. I think that it undermines public trust in city council action and in our system. And I think that that's harmful. I think that this entire matter also brought to light some real deficiencies in our process, particularly in our notification process that I think that the city is taking steps to address, not I think, I know, is taking steps to address and rectify. And to that point, the fact that this Logan Sports Street rezoning issue has exposed some of these deficiencies, I think, runs counter to some of the slippery slope comments that we heard about, well, you know, if the council can revisit this decision, can't they revisit everything else? Well, legally, not really. There are a lot of details that go into that. It's not like council then is going to turn around and look at a zoning decision from 10 years ago and change it. That is, for one thing, I think the other thing is that as a governmental body, if, I think, if we take an action and we feel like that action was an error, I think it is okay to say that was wrong and we should do it right. I understand the competing interests. I think that the greater good would be to roll back and reapply and hold a hearing. I live on this street. I welcome people who would be able to afford to live in what Mr. Bohack proposes. And as a general matter, I have a real problem with sort of this undercurrent narrative of the idea that anything other than single-family or anything other than buildings that only professionals can afford to live in is necessarily undesirable. I don't think that Logan Sports Street should be exclusive to people who can just afford nice, big, historic homes. I think that people should have a right to live in nice places. It would be unfair of me and a lie for me to say that all of my constituents, and I've heard from many, oppose anything other than R2. I do have some constituents who have said that. But I've also heard others who tell me that they, what I just said, that they wouldn't have a problem with residents that an R3 development would bring and that they would love more playmates for their kids. I do think that the more appropriate request would have been R3 instead of a jump to R4. Whether that was proposed by the city or Mr. Bohack, I think at this point is neither here nor there. But that's where my mind is and that's where my sticking point is with it, is that that jump doesn't, it just, it doesn't sit right with me.
Anything else?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Not sure where to start, really. I grew up on that street. I know that street very well. I spent a great deal of my childhood defying my mother's orders and walking down that street to the back of the park. However, I do not see anything wrong with that lot being developed. I do agree that R3 is where it should be. However, there is more than sufficient precedent for R4 in the immediate vicinity of the lot in question. I am very disappointed that some of the people in opposition to this have said that R3 is unacceptable given that at least one of them owns four contiguous, separate R3 lots. And there has been no effort to downzone those. And they are immediately across the street from the lot in question. There's another R3 lot immediately across the street from the lot in question. And there's our four lot immediately across the street. So a lot of the arguments for me do not hold water, quite frankly. And that's where I will begin. However, I do think that I have some issues with the way the process was done. I, on the other hand, have some serious issues with some of the words that were said to Mr. Bohack in the process of trying to discuss this. There was some behavior that was not adult, quite frankly. And that is tremendously disappointing. And that's a huge part of the reason why we are where we are right now. I think an R3 compromise should have been made as soon as there was any opposition. I think both sides would have benefited from just cooling off and doing exactly that. It sounds now that neither side of this issue is willing to even consider that as an option. And so you have left it to us to decide. And no matter what our decision is, half of you are not going to like it. There is no getting around that.
I'm sorry. This, no. Ms. Costello, public comment is over. Ms. Costello, I have to ask you not to comment.
If I am in error, I'm merely going off the current zoning map that I have in front of me here.
Ms. Costello.
If I am in error on that for any reason, then I apologize for stating that in error. But at least when our current zoning map was last updated, those four lots were R3. That really is neither here nor there as far as my opinion on the ultimate matter. But the main comment I want to make is how tremendously disappointed I am that this whole situation has come to this point. It never should have. May I ask a question of you, Mr. Kirkland? Have you identified any improper processes, anything in the process of the original zoning application that...?
I reach the same conclusion as your prior city attorney, that there's nothing in the process that renders the decision subject to reversal. There are many things that both of us have expressed to you all in executive session that could have been done differently and should have been.
Yeah. And that's... That unfortunately doesn't help my decision-making process entirely. But thank you very much, Mr. Kirkland. I could ramble on for a long time about this. But what it boils down to is this issue never should have come to this point. And I'm disappointed that it has. And I'm disappointed in a lot of the people involved in this, that it has gotten to this juncture. And I wish that an issue that should have been decided between citizens has now become for us to be decided. But it's not the first time and it won't be the last time. And with that, I will defer back to you.
Ms. Bellinger?
I believe that this is an ethical issue and that the consequences that we're talking about, having R4 zoning that can then lead to further R4 zoning and apartments, would be a very serious mistake for the city of Nacogdoches. And that's the reason that so many people asked me to bring it to the attention of the city council and to put it on the agenda, to have a public hearing. And that's the reason that I've done it. I think we have an opportunity to start again and to do the process correctly. And that's why, and that's all I have to say on it.
Thank you, Ms. Bellinger. Mr. Bowler?
Thank you, Mayor. If there had been a compromise made before tonight, I would be okay with R4 going to R3. But it has been noted that there was multiple errors in the process. And my thought is we start all over again. And if neither party agrees to restart, then I talked to the city attorney before, in my opinion. And in his opinion, there was no really anything unethical in the process. So, thank you. That's...
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I really do believe that there's a place for a house on Logan Sports Street of a style that Mr. Bohack referred to, something like what was built on Lanana by Mr. App, while it is certainly not historical. I do think it fits the neighborhood. And unfortunately, you can't build a historic house. I'm currently building a house on Texas Street, not a block from, or two blocks from where this is located. And I want to be in that neighborhood. It's a beautiful neighborhood. I want to walk down Logan Sports Street and into the park and woods and Brigade and up all those streets. It's a beautiful area. My wife and I walk there three or four times a week. My wife and I walk there three or four times a week, and it is beautiful. But I do think that there are other people who would like to live in that neighborhood. We looked for a lot to build on for three years. Ever since we've been downtown, we've been looking for a place to live and finally found the property on Texas Street. So I share Mr. Bohack's desire to be in that area, and I know that there would be a desire for rentals in that area, as there are on Martinsville Street with other duplexes that have been built there. I agree, apartments are not appropriate. That's not what that neighborhood needs to be, but I think Mr. Bohack would also tell you that he agrees with that sentiment. I, like the others, just wish that we could have come to a spot where we could compromise. I know not everybody likes that word, but we could compromise, and we could have had a development of townhouses or duplexes that would have been appropriate in the neighborhood. I think that would have, again, like Mr. Anderson said, we wouldn't be here tonight. We would have a project going up that would generate tax dollars to help pay for our streets and pay for our sewer and our water and all these other things that we need to fix. So, again, unfortunately, it's in our laps tonight, and we're hours late. We've got other things to consider, and so with that, I would, you know, ask for a vote, if there's no other comment. No comments? Okay. Let's see if we would use our hands. Those in favor, signal saying aye.
Can we say in favor of what?
I'm sorry.
Or we'd want to be clear.
Adopting the resolution.
Adopting the resolution as read by Ms. Bellinger. Those in favor, signal by saying aye. Okay. Those opposed? Okay. Motion does not pass. We will move to item 7C. I'm sorry, that will close that public hearing, and we will now open a public hearing, C. Consider an ordinance establishing a PD Plan Development District and approving a concept plan for lots 1A and 1B, City Block 64, located at 2827 Railroad Street. This request has been submitted by Warren Sparks' case file, PD 2021-04. City Planner Lanana, and we will take a short recess.
Thank you.
Senator, Saifan, you proceed.
All right, thank you, Lena Hilton, City Planner. So, tonight, we're going to be talking about the establishment of a planned development district and the associated concept plan. And so our zoning ordinance, just to give you a little background information, our zoning ordinance does allow for planned developments that provide the opportunity for individualized zoning for specific parcels of land. This way developers can alter development standards or other physical aspects of their development in order to create more compatibility with existing neighborhoods. They can also get really specific about a certain land use or if they want to build something that doesn't really fit into the box of our ordinance or our land use schedule. And so planned developments are unique and they're not common, but we do get them from time to time. And so the process for creating a planned development is a three-step process. The first is the concept plan, and that establishes the district. That's reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission and approved by City Council. And it establishes just the general land uses and concept of what the developer wants to do. The second step is the development plan. That's a more detailed plan where they actually come forward with a layout that shows building locations and parking and drives and things like that. That plan gets reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission and also approved by City Council and establishes any other additional standards or conditions on that development. And then the final phase is the PD site plan, which is reviewed and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that's a construction-level detail of plans that we can actually use for permitting. And Planning and Zoning Commission is reviewing those to make sure that they're still in line with the development plan that City Council approved. And so that's that three-step process. And so tonight, we're going to be considering that first step, which is the concept plan, establishing the district and then providing some general guidelines for the development. And so, again, this request is for approval of a concept plan to establish a development district for approximately 27 acres located at 2827 Railroad Street. Again, this planned development district is intended to provide for more flexibility, impose additional restrictions on the property, and we'll get into what those restrictions are in just a minute. The applicant does own the property, and the improvements on the property include a single-family dwelling that's also serving as the applicant's residence. And he's also using the property as a contractor's yard, where he's been openly storing equipment and materials for his construction business, which includes the transportation and storage of roadway construction materials. And so the applicant has been operating this business, this location, for over 10 years. However, a contractor's yard is only allowed in B2, general business zoning, and then light and heavy industrial. The property is zoned R1, single-family, and R3, two-family. So, again, that commercial business isn't allowed in those residential zoning districts. When it came to our attention early last year, or I'm sorry, earlier this year, that there were commercial activities taking place on the property, we actually issued a zoning violation to Mr. Sparks. And in response to that letter, he requested an actual zone change from residential to B2, general business. And so we brought that item forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission in March or April. They actually recommended denial based on staff's recommendation because we were concerned about just all of the other general commercial activities that are allowed in the B2 zoning district. We also expressed concerns with the impact on Railroad Street from the big, heavy equipment that Mr. Sparks uses for his business. And then there were concerns from the neighbors about the noise and kind of the disturbances that they were experiencing based on that commercial activity. And so that item came before City Council in May, I think is actually the first meeting for the mayor and council member, Bellinger. And we expressed the same concerns, that general business wasn't appropriate for the property just because of all the other land uses that are included in that and how that may adversely impact Railroad Street, the adjacent neighbors, and how it just wasn't compatible with the neighborhood. And so City Council denied that request, but also expressed their concerns over shutting down Mr. Sparks' business and wanted to see if staff could come to some sort of compromise with the property owner and the neighbors to allow Mr. Sparks to continue his business on a limited scale and then phase it out over time. And so we talked about the planned development process and how that would be a good tool to achieve those ends. And so this PD application is in response to that direction that we received from City Council back in May. And so with that, we will get into the details of the planned development district. So, what you see on your screen is the concept plan, and these are the development standards that have been proposed by the applicant, and we included a copy of that in your agenda packet. They include limiting the land uses to the existing single-family residence that's there today, and also the existing workshop and office. And it says here 5,000 square feet, because that's what we proposed to, that was in the original packet for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Then upon review, we realized that really that area is going to be more like 10,000 square feet just because of the size of the equipment that's going to be stored in that area. So, the existing single-family residence, the existing workshop and office, and then a 10,000-square-foot outdoor storage area for the large equipment and building materials, and that'll be screened on all sides. The equipment materials will also be relocated to the north side of that shop and office. So, right now, the equipment is just kind of located sporadically just across the property. And so the idea is to consolidate it in one location behind the shop and office to help seal it or help conceal it from view, so that way it can be properly screened. The type of equipment includes about 13 vehicles. They include tractor-trailers, dump trucks, backhoe, trackhoe, and then a front-end loader. Those are used for that commercial construction business that Mr. Sparks owns. Some of the materials that are being stored on-site include limestone base and riprap rock, which is used for the construction of streets and other permanent improvements. And right now, Mr. Sparks has a total of five employees, including four drivers and a secretary who works there about two days a week in the office. He's proposing to amend the driver's schedule for a start time of 7:30 with the big-belly dump trucks leaving no earlier than 6:00 a.m., so that way it's more in line with our noise ordinance that limits commercial activity to certain hours of the day. And then Mr. Sparks is also proposing to share the cost of the maintenance and repair of Railroad Street. And so we don't have a detailed agreement with this phase, but when we come back with the development phase, with the development phase, we will actually have a detailed shared maintenance agreement that's going to be worked out between the property owner and our city engineering department, and that'll be a condition of the approval of the development plan. So you guys will see a copy of that with the second phase of the PD. And so those are just the general guidelines for the PD. The applicant is also proposing a 10-year phase-out. And so in this table, you see the various phases. There are six, and so the idea is every two years, the operations are reduced in nature either by employees or the materials or the equipment. And so by January 1st, 2032, all commercial activities would cease and desist, and the property would revert back to the single-family and two-family zoning. Now, as part of this application, City Council does have the right to impose additional conditions. And so if City Council wanted to accelerate that phase-out process to where, you know, the closeout was within a shorter time period, then City Council could do that. This is just proposed by the applicant at this time. Just to give an overview of the surrounding area, so the property in the surrounding area does consist primarily of low-to-medium-density residential zoning districts, including R1, R2, and R3. It's a very sparsely populated area with a couple of single-family residents located immediately south of Railroad Street, one located to the north, and then the large area to the east is actually just undeveloped vacant property. And then there's elementary school over to the west, just on the other side of that private lake that you see on your screen. The future land use plan does designate this area as rural. That's probably because of the sparsely populated nature of the area. It does have limited access to infrastructure, and so that kind of accounts for the designation of the rural development. We do find that the request does meet some of the land use policies and objectives that are outlined in the comprehensive plan, including providing for buffers when you have commercial development adjacent to residential, trying to limit any adverse impacts when you have incompatible developments, so providing for additional standards to accommodate nuisances. And the third was just providing for compatible development with residential and commercial. And I think I already stated that, so I apologize. And so, again, this is just another overview of the development standards. When we took this to the Planning and Zoning Commission on November 8th, they did recommend approval, but they had additional conditions that they wanted to impose on the planned development district. So as part of the approval, they wanted that shared maintenance agreement to include a small raised hump that's located in front of one of the homes on that road. And we did go out and inspect.
Say that, I'm sorry. Say that again.
Oh, sorry. So...
Raised.
Yes, so there's a small, I would call it a bump in the road that makes it uneven. And it's a little bit higher than some of the other parts of the road. The road in general isn't necessarily completely flat. There's dips, but there's a certain area that's located right in front of Mr. Conley's home that is raised, and so it does create some additional noise when vehicles traverse that. And so part of that shared maintenance agreement, PNC, wanted to make sure that that was repaired as part of the additional improvement. It wasn't something that was long-term, it was done upfront. And so whenever we come back with the development plan that has that shared maintenance agreement, we'll make sure that that's addressed within the terms and agreements. They also proposed a mesh screening fence along Railroad Street, so along the southern boundary of the property, so that way they could provide some additional screening from the commercial activity to those residents that live just south of the property. And so we don't have the details of that yet, but when we come back with the development plan, we'll have specifications on the height and material, so that, so those will be adopted as part of that development plan as well. So we'll have more detail on that. Staff also wanted to make sure that we were very explicit. So in the narrative in the ordinance that was in your packet, we didn't note a specific expiration date, but it was always intended to be at the beginning of 2032. And so we're actually going to add to our recommendation the condition that the PD will expire on January 1st, 2032, and revert back to the previous R1, single-family and R3, two-family zoning districts. And so this is just a closer image of that area. So the red square is supposed to be that outside storage area for the contractor's yard, but then we realized that really that was the 5,000 square feet. He really needs a little bit larger area to hold all that equipment. So the blue kind of represents the 10,000 square feet that we mentioned earlier. And these are some site photos that we took recently of the property. The one in the upper left-hand corner is actually standing in Railroad Street facing east. So as you're getting closer to the property, the photo in the lower right-hand corner, that's actually standing in front of the property. So that's the view from the street. These two photos are the entrance. So on the upper left, that's actually the, you can see the end of the street, and on the lower left, that's the actual entrance into Mr. Sparks' property. These are some photos on-site. Mr. Sparks allowed us to come onto the property and take pictures of some of the materials and some of the equipment that's being stored that'll be part of the contractor's yard. And so you can see the mounds of earth materials and some of the equipment in the background. Here's some additional photos of the dump trucks and some of the rocks that we mentioned earlier. And these are images of the shop and the office that he's currently using to operate his business. And so those are existing, and there are no new buildings proposed with the PD or expansions of buildings. These are going to be the only structures that are going to be permitted for the use of the contractor's yard. So as part of the notification process, we did send out written notices to all the property owners within 200 feet. They included six property owners. We did receive a couple of written responses, and we included those in your packet. So we included, we had a letter of support, and we also had a letter of opposition from Mr. Conley. And specifically, he was concerned about the ability for the city to enforce some of the conditions of the development standards, specifically the timing of the operations, when trucks will leave, and how we were going to verify that that was happening. And so what we discussed with Mr. Conley and with the Planning and Zoning Commission is that if we were, if it was brought to our attention that there was a violation of the development standards, say he was leaving at 4:00 a.m. instead of the 7:30 that were outlined, we actually have surveillance equipment that we can set up in the roadway to monitor the roadway traffic. Now, we're not going to monitor the activities taking place on the private property, but we can monitor the types and times that vehicles are coming through. And so we would have an ability to verify and then enforce that if needed. He was also concerned with kind of the timing and phasing of the development and the acceleration of that. And so there was a discussion about that as far as, you know, when the equipment was going to be reduced and when the number of employees were going to be, you know, limited. But other than that, those were his main concerns in regards to the conditions that were outlined in the PD. You also received an email with general concerns that, we didn't include that in the packet because we didn't receive it, but we do have a, we do have a copy if you'd like to talk about that one. Other than that, there was this general concern amongst the commission in regards to additional screening, so that's why they wanted to impose the condition with the fence, but they accepted all of the other proposed standards of the PD that were presented by the property owner. So the conditions for approval of a planned development district, we've outlined those on your screen, they include that the development is generally consistent with the future land use policies and the map adopted as part of the comprehensive plan. So we talked about that commercial activities aren't consistent with the rural style of development that's designated on the property, but it does otherwise further some of the land use policies, and the PD will expire, so it's a temporary use. And so the idea is it will revert back to a single-family after that 10-year period. The other condition is the proposed uses and configuration of the uses are compatible with the existing planning and adjoining uses. And so we work to restrict those activities to just those of the contractor's yard, to limit the area of those, so they're very specific, so they're not spread over the property, and that we made sure that there were additional buffers and screening provided to limit the impacts on the adjacent neighborhood. C includes the general arrangement of streets and conforming to our adopted thoroughfare plan. There are no additional streets that are proposed with this PD, and they're actually proposing to share the maintenance and repair cost of Railroad Street. D includes that the uses should, the uses and densities should be consistent with the purposes and standards of the planned development district. So the purposes do include creating flexibility to address specific sites, specific site issues for compatibility, and I feel like that's what we're doing here. We're making restrictions and accommodations to allow these to continue for a limited time while addressing some of the concerns of the neighbors and City Council. And then E, that the progress, further is the public health, safety, and general welfare of the community. And so in that regard, we feel like that the impact will be minimal based on the conditions that we've placed, and the cost to the overall city will be limited based on the shared costs that the applicant has proposed as part of the condition of the PD. And so the applicant is in attendance and would like the opportunity to address the commission prior to the public hearing. And with that, I'll conclude our presentation and open it up for questions from the council.
Questions for Ms. Hilton?
Yeah, well, let me just ask a question. This is going to be PD for 10 years?
Yes, sir.
And revert back to residential?
Mm-hmm.
One, two, one, two.
Yes.
And it says on the 200-feet notification that was one single family occupied?
Yes, there's an existing home that's, the property owner's actually living in. It's his permanent residence.
The property owner, Mr. Sparks?
Mm-hmm, correct.
And there's, there was no other property within the 200 feet that was occupied?
Within the 200-foot buffer?
Right.
Oh, yes, so there are a couple of residents that live just south of Railroad Street, including Mr. Conley and Mr. Thurman. Mr. Conley is here, and he's going to address the council as well. And we talked to Mr. Thurman, and he didn't have any opposition to the request. And then there's a property owner directly to the north that we received the letter of support for. Those were the only residents within the 200-foot notification area.
And the manufacturer home?
Oh, yes, we, we didn't receive a letter from that individual.
It was one of the, oh, the elementary. Is it okay if I just make a comment about my thoughts?
I understand the concept, concept plan and phasing out, but I'm looking more like a five-year phase-out instead of 10. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Bellinger, anything from Ms. Hilton? Okay. Yes?
I don't have a question. I mean, I do have some thoughts on it, but are we going to reserve that for later?
Yeah, I think so. I was going to have Mr. Sparks.
That's fine.
If you didn't have anything for her right now.
I don't.
We can certainly get her back later, Ms. Anderson.
Yeah, I'll, I'll wait.
Okay, I think we're ready. Mr. Sparks?
Good evening. My name is Warren Sparks. Would you want to ask me a question first, or?
No, no, we'd like to just hear what you have to say.
You know, I was, if, you know, just overall, I almost felt like I just sailed and got out of Nacogdoches. And that's just how I feel, you know, but I'm not, because I like my place, I like where I live. And I spent a lot of time on that place. Before I moved to that place over there, it was, it was horrible, you know. And I can assure you, there aren't any one of y'all that would live over there before I fixed that place up, before I done what I done. I mean, the trash, the dump, Mr. David Conley, you know, is this, you know, he's having issue now because you can't, he can't control you. He have eaten food there, I have fed him. He even, he even helped work, helped me clean the place up. He worked for me before. I've hired him out. It wasn't any issue, you know. And today, you know, here we are, you know, here, here today with this, you know, with this, and he walk my place every day. You have a problem with him, good friends with him, you know, and no problem at all. And I know, I understand he says there's, you know, there's noise now. And, and I don't want to bring things up to make him look bad or anything. What I want to do is I want to try to see if I can maybe be able to do my 10-year phase-out, you know, because I don't want to go out of business. I retired out of the oil field, and I want to finish doing what I'm doing. But to, like, I think you said, five years, I got to go back and punch a clock. I didn't put no hard work, any hard time in to go back and punch a clock. I enjoy doing my own thing and having a business. And this here will put me out of business, you know, and it's hard to restart, you know, the way things are now, you know, in business. And I know, I know Mr. Conley say the noise or the dirt. Why is it now that the noise or the dust or whatever bother him, and it never did before? And I want to share this, like I say, not, not down to him or anything, but just to, for my, for my benefit to you guys. Mr. Conley had gotten a, a physical, you know, from, from a doctor. They drove in, and I drove up one day, and I was in a hurry going, late for a ballgame, and I drove by, and I drove by, it was a herd of dust, and I seen him laying on the ground, so I said, that's David. So I spun around and drove back up there, and I'm like, what, David laying on? Now, he's on my property now. Didn't ask or anything. And I go up like, did you pass out, or you, what happened? No, I'm just, I'm getting a physical. And it was dusty, you know, it's all get out. He was there getting a, getting a full-blown physical, laying on, laying on the ground. He would ask, I heard, he would win the office, he would ask. But I said, well, why did you come here to my place? Why didn't you go to your place? Which I knew why I didn't go to his place, but, but he came to my place just to get a physical, you know. Now, all of a sudden, now, everything is an issue, you know. And I talked to the neighbors from Railroad Street all the way up to Leroy Street, all the way down Woden Road. Is there an issue with the trucks leaving out anything? There's not, and there's what, 30-some people there? There's not a resident, one. They had an issue with that, you know. And even I told them about the meetings, I told them, you know, no one has, no one had an issue with it. As you can see, me and him, the only one here, you know. And being able to phase out behind one person's, you know, opinion, it, it hurts, to be honest with you. Really does. And I, in a, I really, I really don't want to put a, but I do what I have to do to be able to, to continue it for the phase-out, because I really, I really hate to put a big screen fence, because I don't want to look like a prison where we live. I don't want to look, you know, because from the roadside, as some of the pictures that you saw, from the road, actually, it's almost, the elevation is almost 30-foot. And from the road, you can't even see up that way, you know. And so if someone wants to really see and drive up there, they're just, they're being nosy, or they're up to no good, because we don't get company. That's just how bad that part of town is, to be honest with you, you know. No one comes up there. If they do, you know, they're, they're really lost. And so there's not a lot of traffic, there's not a lot of issues, you know, there. We hadn't had, you know, any issue that I know of, you know, there. But it's just, you know, but I, but I will do what I have to do when I, you know, to be able to make it, to make it happen. Any, any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Sparks?
A tiny one. When you drive out, and I have been up and looked and driven down the road, so, when you drive out, what direction do your trucks go to get to the loop? I was trying to...
We, we take a lift on Leroy and go up to Woden Route and go out. We don't, we don't, and none of my guys are allowed to drive through the neighborhood down Railroad Street, or there are a lot of houses all the other way, past the school. We go to, you know, out that way to, to avoid, you know, a lot of things.
And have there been any issues of any, have any people been worried about you going that way? And I'm a little concerned about the wear and tear on the roads that way, because you have pretty heavy-duty equipment there.
Not at all. The only issue we have on railroad, and I know it's hard to explain, but it, the trucks are not the issue, you know. When railroad, when that street was paved, that was a dirt road before we started throwing it fit to get it paved. And when, and I say anything bad about the city, but when the city came in and did pave it, you're so happy living on, from a dirt road. I'm two miles from downtown, living on a dirt road and paying $3,500 in taxes a year and living on a dirt road. And when they came and paved the road, they just came in and just, you know, and I do that for a living. They just came in and just threw something down, and that was it. And that's what we, that's why we have the issues on a lot of the roads now. The same road that we drive on every day, we're going to have those issues. Like, like you're talking about, like by his house, the hole right there, that road needs to be cut out, you know, because there's, there's an underground spring there. That's why she, like, Mr. Lane was saying about the bump right by David's house, there's an underground spring there. It needs to be cut out and fixed properly, but they don't do that. They just came in, throw some asphalt down, covered it, you know, which, they come from dirt road, you know, well, you're glad to have some asphalt, so you don't really complain about it. But it could have been done a whole lot better than what it was done, you know, for that road. And people say, well, I know, he just said, well, the trucks ain't made for that road. There ain't no roads made for a truck. That's why we pay our trucks, the restaurants, those trucks a year, it's a thousand dollars a year. Each truck in the state of Texas has to pay a $500 heavy-use tax a year, and we pay road and bridge tax, you know. So we pay for all that, you know, and they say, well, but that road is not. And I like to say, is it my fault that the dead-end road that I live on didn't get prepared right as a street or just a trail, prepared a trail, you know? But now, I, you know, we suffer from it, you know, because it, and it wasn't fixed right, you know, because if these trucks missing roads up, well, all the roads are coming, like I say, when I come out and turn that way, well, all those roads be messed up by now, you know?
Well, this is a little different because it's, you know, a residential area that isn't expecting big trucks.
And I guess, and I guess it just kind of grew over the years that, you know, it wasn't an issue, it was never an issue, and, and when everybody had an issue, they, everybody come to me, you know, even the neighbor up the road, or I would help David, or Mr. Thurman, you know, it was just never an issue. Everybody was able to get along and resolve and fix things, you know.
My only question?
Okay. Mr. Bellinger?
No.
Not right now.
Ms. Anderson? Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you, sir. Public comment, okay? Yes, sir, public comment.
David Conley.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Sparks has, you know, taken it so personally, you know, but, and I'll remind you in case anybody's forgotten that what really triggered this was the combination of the noise of the trucks waking me up and his having made an offer on the Thurman property and, and telling me his intention was to mine dirt off of it. And, well, I can give you a little update on the, the part there of the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation that Mr. Sparks, the applicant, will repair the hump located in the, in the roadway immediately in front of the residence, in my residence. Well, the, I just happened to catch the, the street repair truck on the street today, went out and kind of flagged them down, said, well, y'all are here to try and fix this? He said, no, but we can, and so they did. And, you know, I'm sure there's going to be some slight improvement, but the guy who, you know, who's been doing those street repairs for many years, he said, no, he agreed with me, he said, no. He said, the only way you're really going to fix this is to tear out this entire section of street and bring up a paving machine in here. He, you know, and so that's my prime concern still is that, I mean, he's done it, there's nothing, Mr. Sparks... There's nothing Mr. Sparks can do personally that, you know, the guy who, who, who's been repairing the streets for years did today. He kind of filled it out, has leveled it out, the low areas best he could, but, uh, I'm willing to bet. I mean, if I, even when I drive over it, I feel it, and so when those empty belly dumper's drove, drive over it, I'm sure they're still gonna make a lot of noise, one's worse than the others. One woke me up a few minutes before four o'clock last Thursday morning, and another one followed, going five and ten minutes later. Approximately four o'clock in the morning. So there's no doubt in my mind that, uh, this is gonna be a continuing problem. And unless, you know, there is enforcement, some kind of policing action, unless they set up a camera or whatever, it's, it's gonna continue. And I'll be here at every meeting with, in the open forum, taking my full three minutes to gripe about it. You know, if, if something isn't done. And then let me address some of the nonsensical parts of this. They're gonna make him put up a fence around that storage area that you can't see. Nobody can see from a street. And Ms. Ms. Helen says, well, that's in the code. Well, what does it take to change the code? Can y'all vote now? If the, if the, the storage area, contractor's yard storage area can't be seen from any street or from any other piece of property, you don't have to put a fence up. And then there's also sort of a contradiction. I'm gonna get this back up. I mean, and that also, there were those recommendations that, uh, he's gonna put up a mesh, a mesh fence on the southern bla, boundary of the property there on Railroad Street, to, it says, to block the view of commercial activity from the existing residents located on the south side of Railroad Street. Well, if he moves everything over to the north side of the, of the shop, there's nothing, there's not gonna be anything to see. There's gonna be no need for a mesh fence on the southern boundary if he moves everything to the north side of the shop. So there again, it's, you know, nonsensical part of the, of the proposal. And I'll just say generally, I agree, you know, five years, y'all, y'all rejected the zone change request. And this thing is, is essentially giving him a ten-year extension and four years, virtually no curtailing of operation, other than that, you know, time restriction, and, you know, that I, I think is gonna be unenforceable. Unless they set up a camera, or they have a code enforcement officer get up at three-thirty, four o'clock in the morning and sit at the intersection for an hour or more, to try and, you know, catch a truck leaving. So, I know he's, well, you know, give him the approval, but, you know, if we don't get enforcement, I know that, you know, there's, the trucks are gonna continue to leave early, because he's told me, if they, if they don't get out early, get down to around Houston or Dallas, wherever they're going, very early in the morning, he's not gonna get the job. So I know it's a difficult, but, and I'll say again, you know, with pasture renting around Nacogdoches, for fifteen to twenty dollars per acre per year, I found it hard to believe that if he went out and really looked, somebody's not advertising to lease their land for this, but if he went out and really looked, he could find two or three acres, which is all he needs. He could pay them ten times that amount, and that would be a very modest expense for his business, very modest. You know, but I probably have to put up a couple of thousand dollars deposit to ensure that he kind of restores the land back to its present condition when he vacates it. But, uh, that's my position. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, counsel, any questions of, of anybody? I guess, uh, I guess.
Yes.
We need a motion?
We need a motion.
To discuss? Do you have a motion, uh?
I'll move.
Okay.
I'll move to, but we have to just clarify, we have to do that before we start discussing. Okay, so I will move that counsel approve, um, regular addenda item seven C as written.
No, no, I'm, yeah, and, and so now is that, which, which option is it? There's one that's as presented, one by P and Z.
Yes, so the, here are the options as presented, um, except for the slight modification for the size of the contractor's yard. And then Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the two conditions of, that you see, and then staff has, uh, two additional conditions, which are really more clarifications about the expiration date and the zoning.
So I guess we would need to recommend approval of one of these, right? As presented, or the written additional restrictions of P and Z.
And, and to be clear, this is just the first of multiple steps.
Yes, this, this is just the concept plan.
Which we will be able to approve or, or deny.
So would you, would?
I'll do the addition, I'll do the additional, yeah.
Okay.
And that's second.
Uh, P and Z commi, uh, commission condition, that's the one we wanna, okay.
Okay, second, okay.
Let me clarify, with the additional staff recommendations, is that what, I don't know what we're voting on.
Yeah, the additional staff recommendations, the PD, the additional staff recommendations, and the P and Z.
The one at the bottom, the last one on there.
Yeah, so, so. It's all of it, the P and Z and the.
And the staff.
Yeah.
So the recommendation would be to, uh, approve the PD as presented, uh, with the conditions outlined by P and Z and staff's recommendation.
Thank you.
Motion?
Motion.
In a second.
Okay.
Okay, discussion. Ms. Anderson?
I'll start by saying, I, I think the, uh, the ten-year, um, length on sunsetting this plan development is, is, uh, in my opinion, too long. Um, I, I would tend to agree that, you know, I, I am now in, in the business of, uh, um, selling land and, and homes, and it, it strikes me as a little unusual that in this amount of time, another piece of property that would be suitable, that would have better, safer ingress and egress, um, could not be found, um, pretty close to where, um, the, uh, the current location is. Um, I'm not fundamentally in opposition to it. I do think ten years is too long. Um, and I think, you know, if there's some way that we can shorten that with the, the understanding that maybe another location could be leased during that time, so that at least the business operation could be moved elsewhere. Um, um, because it, it seems like from the pictures there, you know, when we're talking about trucks in a, a mobile office, that's, that's not too, uh, owners a task to move, um, so I, I would, I would prefer a shorter period of time on sunsetting the, the PD.
Bishop?
Yep. Thank you, mayor. Um, my main concern with this whole thing was how the community in the area felt about it, mainly since we had only heard from a couple of people. Um, and so I drove, I drove down, I, I drove before, but I drove down again today. Um, and I, I noticed that our signage i- is at the very, very end, it's a small yard sign. It's at the dead end, right at the driveway. I'm not surprised that nobody knows what's going on, because you have to drive down there to see it. And so I know that, that we're in the process, I know that we've made changes to our notice requirements, and I hope that we can be in the process of making more changes, because that, that to me is, was wholly insufficient. Um, it's at, it's at the dead end, nobody up the street could see, could see, um, what was going on. And the reason that I know that is because when I was driving, I, I saw the notice and I looked around by the, I was one of the nosy people that, that drove up there. Um, I agree that with, that, uh, that the screening with, with both, actually, the screening requirement, um, I mean, unless, I guess, it's tied to the city code, it seems nonsensical to me too, because I couldn't see anything from the street view. Um, it is a high, uh, elevation. Um, but anyway, when I was, um, looking around and then driving back, I saw some people getting in their cars, and I said, what the heck? And I stopped and I, I asked, um, if they lived in the area, and they said yes. And I said, you mind if I take some, a couple minutes of your time? And I talked to him about, for about half an hour, about Mr. Sparks. And they told me that they have no complaints about it. That they've talked to people in the area who have no complaints about it, that in fact, Mr. Sparks employs people in the community. And that he, um, is helpful and involved to neighbors who, and, and then helpful, like I said, to people who need it. Um, I, I understand absolutely the concern with the trucks leaving at four in the morning, three in the morning before six, and I understand the concern with enforcement. Um, I wonder if, I, I, I appreciate you explaining that, um, we could set up cameras if, if there was some sort of violation. I wonder if there's a way that we can write into the plan development some sort of, I, I mean, just, just in terms of assurance, assurances to Mr. Connolly. Um, because I guess, okay, so say you put the cameras up and, um, you catch trucks leaving at four in the morning, let's say. What is the, what's, I mean, what's the, I guess, punishment, or what's the, what's the consequence of that?
So, and, and in that regard, because the condition of the PD is the hours that the trucks are leaving, he'd be in violation of the terms of the PD. And that would be grounds to revoke the PD or reevaluate the conditions, and so we would actually initiate, um, an amendment process for that and bring it back to council and have that discussion, um, so if, if, if he didn't come into compliance quick, quickly with that. And so there are, there is a, there is a mechanism in place to address people who aren't complying with the conditions of their zoning.
Seems like a heavy penalty. Um, okay, well then, I, I feel comfortable with that, as long as, you know, we have that assurance from, from you that we have the ability to monitor it. Um, but otherwise, given what I heard from, and now this is in court, would be hearsay, hearsay on hearsay, but, um, I also asked the residents if they had heard from anybody in the community, um, about whether they had any problem with Mr. Sparks doing what he was doing on his property. And they told me, no, that the only concern that they had heard was one person making a comment about the school being closed. But the school is closing in a year. Um, and, and so to me, the, the, I think the prevailing interest here is, is how the community feels about it, and from what I gathered, um, they felt supportive. And so I, I agree with the plan development. I think that ten years is fine. I don't have a problem with the ten years.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Bellinger?
I'm very torn, um, partly because I'm very glad we have a, a business that employs people. Um, I'm the exact same situation as you, um, Ms. Fisher. Um, I did drive down there and I, um, I did take note of, of all the people employed in this. Um, that's, that's all I have to say. I really am very torn on it, because I can understand how, you know, starting a business in this residential area, and then it grows, and then it grows, and then it grows. Um, and we should be able to have, um, business within the city. I mean, I'm okay with having, uh, businesses in areas of our city. I just frankly don't know what to think, so.
Any, any thoughts on the term?
Um, let me just ask Mr. Sparks, if, if you moved, what do you think about moving your prop, moving your business? I, I don't know enough about all that.
If, if, if you can find somewhere, and I know you say it's hard, I know Mr. Connolly thinks that you can just go find property anywhere. Around Nacogdoches, the property that I've found, and I have found some, everybody, was it two or three acres? They won't, was, the cheapest they wanted for was twenty-five hundred a month to lease. You know, there, and there's a lot of open land everywhere, and, and it's not like I'm not looking. And my tenure plan is, and hopefully it won't go ten years. If I could find somewhere, I'd move tomorrow, you know, just to keep the business going. You know, because I, I really, I take pride in what I do, you know, and that's why, you know, it's, it just blows my mind, but it, it, it is, is hard to move and relocate, because you've been somewhere for so long, you know, and I have sold stuff, and I have, and, and, and this is God's honest witness, witness. I have spent almost thirty grand on my trucks to make them quieter, just for Mr. Connolly, you know. Now, on the other hand, if I wasn't a Christian man, I wouldn't choke Mr. Connolly, but I don't, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not that way, and I take every concern, you know, and, and it's serious, and I, I mean, I wouldn't be wa, waking up, you know, at that time. And, and my deal is, and if it, if it's tomorrow, we, we have, after this meeting, if, if, uh, if the road is messed up, you know, I'll pay and fix the road in, in front of his, in front of his house. And it, and it have always been a bad spot, because it's a wet spot there, and it was, it has never been fixed right. And we, we passed it, the city's passed it, you know, but you gotta, like you said, you gotta cut it out, make it even, so you don't have that noise of anything, you know, coming through. But it would be kind of, you know, hard to move, but I can, you know, I probably could relocate if, if possible, if, if it's not out too far. You know, because it's, uh, where I'm at now, uh, I've been fortunate that I don't have a lot of theft. And I had a place down on Fifty-Nine, between here and left, there's a shop down there that I had, you know, and it was, that would, that would, that would put you out of business, and so I let that place go. Actually, I wish I would have kept it, because this is a pretty valuable spot right now, with an interstate coming through.
So that's what I was thinking, is that this is pretty secure, because it's the end of the road, and you live there, and your equipment is so very valuable. Um, um, I do, I do think that we're not talking just about Mr. Connolly, though. We're talking about running a business in the city.
Right.
And so what are the.
And I do understand that.
And so what are the repercussions for the city? And, uh, one repercussion is it's great to have people employed, and it's great to have good use of, of the land. But the other repercussion is this is residential, too, so that's why, um.
Yeah, I, I, I do, I do understand that part of everything.
You know, not to, it, it's more than Mr. Connolly's.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why we're all discussing all this.
And you know the other property that he was talking about, I want, I don't, I don't want to buy it for dirt, you know. Actually, I want that property, because I don't want any low income coming around. That's why I bought all the property where I'm at now, you know, because I like it. And for one reason, or someone asked, well, why not? You know, you can make money. It's not about the money, you know, it's not about the money. You know, there's a, there's a twelve-foot lake there, and I found three kids out there in the middle of that lake that could not swim. I believe in nineteen seventy-two, one of the kids went from, uh, uh, M. Line Carpenter, drowned in that lake. I don't want low income, and we have low-income properties around, it, a lot of kids. You know, so that's why I try to buy everything. I, I will buy every corner, even if it's a school, if they sold the school tomorrow, if it was in my power, I would buy it. Because I don't want anything coming around like that. Don't get me wrong, I know we, we have, you know, there's plenty of places to, you know, to build, but, you know, I like being secluded, and I like where I'm at, and I take pride in doing it, because I worked hard to get to where I'm at. And I hate to just throw it away, because it's the issue, but I do understand what we have, we have to do, what we have to do on that.
Yes, well, what.
Absolutely.
Can you think of, of ways that you might, um, that you might better be able to? Because you do have a profitable business right there in the middle of the city, that you might be able to protect the city and other residents, other than being a good neighbor, which obviously you're trying to do. Can you think of ways? If you lived over, what would you like? Because you, because you do have some income coming in that you might be able to help.
Okay, and, okay, what's, what's the question again?
So, so if, if, if there, you're in a residential area, can you think of ways to protect the residential area while you still operate your business? That's really my bigger question.
Mm-hmm, if protected in, uh, and I like, if I issue now with the noise or anything, or like leaving at the, right at the, uh, time of six o'clock or seven o'clock, you know. I guess where I grew, I grew up is, you know, being a man at six o'clock, you should be up already, but, you know, I know people are older, they don't, you know, you get, you do your thing, but, you know, yeah, even in that sense, we could, we could, even that, or, or repair the road, or, you know, or do whatever it takes to, like I say, the, the noise reduction, putting, uh, taking, taking the trucks and going from a, uh, just a regular truck to a, what they call a diff system, adding a diff system to a truck, it quiets it down. You know, it doesn't have a lot of smoke and anything to it, you know, and like I said, I've done two of them, and I'm not bragging or anything, it's like six grand a piece to do that. And I'm doing that all because of Mr. Connolly.
Well, but, but, I mean, taking Mr. Connolly out of it and thinking that there are a lot of other residents around, I'm just asking what you might be able to do to keep your business running and still think about that this is a residential area.
Well, just, whatever, I mean, whatever it takes, whatever, whatever it requires, it requires me to do to, to make it happen.
What would you do if you were sitting right here?
If I was sitting right there, I would say, no. You know, I, I, I do understand you guys, and you got, and you, and you have to do what you have to, you know.
So you would tell us not to let you have that business there?
I would say, slow it down, or, you know, or phase it. I, I really don't want to phase it out, but, you know, but I do. but I do understand, I, I have to, you know, move it. It's just, it's just a hard pill to swallow when you've been there. Actually, no, they, I know, Mr. Lanning said, I've been there ten years.
Yeah.
I've run that business for eighteen years.
Yeah, right, right.
Eighteen years.
And I can see how it's grown and grown and grown.
And I do, and I do employ people that, you know, even on, on the property they work, like I said, I employ Mr. Connolly, or just anybody else, or drivers that, or people wouldn't give them a chance. Because in, in the state of Texas right now, if you don't have your CDLs for two years, no, uh, there's no, uh, company that will hire you, or the insurance won't allow you to put them on insurance. Uh, pilgrims, which are JBA's, they have a program for new drivers out of, uh, truck driving school. Well, me on the other hand, well, you know, I, I bite the bullet and try to create jobs and try to create, you know, and, and I do, I do have some good drivers, you know? And by doing that, the insurance is almost, it's up there until you go three years and get it down.
So tell me the wise thing to do here.
The wise thing to do?
Yes, I'd like to know your opinion about the wise thing to do.
The wise thing to do, I, I would, I would, I would say phase it or, and, or try to move, you know? And I, I, and I am looking, I am trying to move, you know?
So five years or seven years or what? Tell us.
I, I would say seven. If you give me seven, I, it would, and, uh, and, and there's a good chance it could be done less than that, you know? Because actually, be, to be honest with you, I'm, I'm, I'm tired of coming down here.
Okay, so seven sounds.
Yeah, because it gets, it gets aggravated, you know, I don't want to keep getting, because I, I take, like I said, I take pride in doing things, and when it's just, you worked so hard and so long, and when it's snatched off money, you know? And, and honestly, I thought several times, I'd put that place on the market and get out of Nacogdoches City League. But that's not me, I, you know, I'm.
So based on that, I'd like to offer an amendment to the, the, um, proposal that we already heard. And that's to amend it to the seven years instead of the ten years.
Does, how does that work? Is Kathleen, I mean, I'm sorry, does, does Ms. Fisher have to accept it? I know there's a way to do that.
Somebody has to second the amendment.
Second.
I second the amendment.
Okay. Then we vote on the amendment first.
And then we vote on the original.
Okay, any discussion about the amendment? Everything stays the same, except shortening the turn, the phase out from ten to seven. Any comments? Uh, those in favor, signal, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Me, because I want to put ten.
I want to put ten.
Who's?
Okay.
I mean, I, originally, I, I didn't hear. Excuse me this minute. Originally, I didn't hear the part about the employees, and that makes a big difference in my opinion.
Mayor, you voted.
Okay, we have voted to amend the original, um, motion.
You're to the main motion now, which is for seven years. Unless somebody wants to move to amend it again and you undo that.
Can I move to amend it again? I'm sorry.
I missed the vote.
Uh, it was three, two. It was Ms. Bellinger, myself, and, and, uh, Mr. Anderson in favor. The other two opposed. That's okay, no problem, sorry. Okay, so.
So we can vote it down and then start again for ten?
Or we can offer another amendment.
Can I offer another amendment?
You can have, certainly.
This is eleven minutes, nine o'clock.
Yeah, right.
Um, I'm due to make another amendment to keep it to the ten years.
I'll second that.
Okay, okay, any, any discussion? Okay, those in favor, signal, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign? Okay, we have amended the motion now, uh.
You're back to the ten, so you get to vote on the PD.
Any discussion? Any discussion on the motion? Okay, those in favor, signal, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign? Okay, that passes, and the public hearing is closed, and no need for executive session, we're adjourned.
There we go, home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I, I didn't hear the rest of it until later.
I'm s- I, I was too, I was looking for some, some.